Thank you and welcome to the Chambers of the Metropolitan Council. As you all know, I guess, since you're here, we are here tonight for a public hearing regarding the Transit Improvement Program that the mayor has submitted to the Metropolitan Council in the form of a proposed ordinance. The council has considered it on first reading. Second reading will be on the coming Tuesday, January 16th, and then proposed third reading would be February 6th of the coming month. In conjunction with our consideration of this legislation, the council has wanted to have a public hearing where we can hear from the constituents of Davidson County and even from those outside Davidson County in regards to this proposed ordinance and the consequent vote of the people in May, proposed vote in May. The format tonight will be as follows. Initially, as with each piece of legislation that comes through the council, the council office does an analysis of it. Tonight, Mr. Jameson will go briefly through a PowerPoint that condenses the analysis that he has already provided to the council and which is available on the council website. Subsequently, we will open up to a public hearing. Each party will get two minutes to speak. I have, I know we have some elected officials here, and I have offered them the opportunity to go first, but they'll be limited to two minutes, just like everybody else. Then, as you come up to speak, I think each person who wants to speak has filled out a little yellow card that has your name and address on it. Please give it to the council staff as you come forward. And it's generally the process here that before you speak, you give your name and address just so council members can acknowledge their constituents as you speak. With that, I will turn the mic over to Mr. Jameson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The following is a summary of the Transit Improvement Process, Legislative Process. I hope this font is large enough for those of you in the back row, but if not, I will be reading through most of this. The ordinance, in effect, would be ordinance number BL 2017-1031. If adopted, it would adopt a transit improvement program. It would approve surcharges to finance that program. And lastly, it would request the Davidson County Election Commission to host a, or hold a countywide referendum election on May 1st of 2018. That ordinance is made possible by state legislation called the Improve Act, adopted by the General Assembly this past summer. The IMPROVE, for those of you who like tortured acronyms, stands for Improving Manufacturing Public Roads and Opportunities for a Vibrant Economy. For those of us who've had to read the bill 50 times, we suspect it also stands for It Must Be Possible to Read Over Vague English. The ordinance, or rather, the state legislation authorizes local governments to assess surcharges on certain pre-existing local privilege taxes. It has to be pre-existing. If you are a local government that does not charge currently one of these six taxes, you cannot adopt that tax and then add a surcharge to it. You can see that we are allowed to assess a surcharge on the local option sales tax, business tax, motor vehicle tax, rental car tax, either the tourist accommodation tax or hotel occupancy tax, and the residential development tax. The project proposes surcharges on four of them, and so you'll see I've deleted those that are of no application. So we'll be talking about the local option sales tax surcharges, business tax, rental car tax, and hotel occupancy tax. There are limits imposed by state legislation on the surcharges a local government can assess. Specifically, we cannot exceed the maximum rates that are set forth in this state legislation. We can add surcharges up to the maximum without affecting our available taxing authority, but separate limits apply to separate categories. So I thought I would go through each of the four categories that are being discussed for surcharges and tell you what we are currently charging as a tax, what is allowed under the Improve Act, and what the project then proposes to be charged. Starting with first, the local option sales tax. Currently, as you probably know, the state sales tax rate is 7%, and locally, we add a local option sales tax of 2.25%. We could go up to 2.75% if desired, but the total now is 9.25%. Under the Improve Act, we would be allowed to increase that current local option sales tax by 100%, in other words, an additional 2.25%. What is proposed, however, is within those limits. It proposes an increase of just 0.5%, essentially lasting for the first five years, and then an additional 0.5% beginning January of 2023. The hotel occupancy tax surcharge. Currently, we charge 6% plus a $2.50 per room, per night occupancy tax. Under the Improve Act, you're allowed to increase that by 20%, so Davidson County could charge 1.2%, a total of 7.2%. What is proposed in the project, however, is only 0.25% beginning July 1st of 2018, then increased to 0.375% in 2023. The business tax surcharge. Currently, we charge 0.02% to 0.3%, depending on the classification of your business. We would be allowed to charge an additional 20% of that current rate, so we would go from 0.02% to 0.024% or from 0.3% to 0.36%. Lastly, the rental car tax. We currently charge 1%. We are allowed under the Improve Act to increase that by 20%, and therefore, the project proposes an increase by that full 20%, making it 1.2%. There are exemptions, six products exempt from the surcharges. Very briefly, that's water sold to and used by manufacturers that's already sold and taxed at the state rate, sales of tangible personal property to common carriers, video programming, telecommunications services, digital audiovisual works and the like, and lastly, vending machine goods that are already taxed at the local rate here at 2.25%. The revenues can therefore be used afterward, after collection can essentially be used for implementation, but in an effort to leave no participle behind, the state legislation states that you can use it for planning, engineering, development, construction, implementation, administration, management, operation, and maintenance of proposed projects. You can also combine those revenues. You can combine them with other funding, state, local, federal, or private monies. You can use that to match state and federal grants. You can use the local government share, or use it to, for the local government share of public-private initiative costs, and you can use the monies to pledge the payment of bonds issued to finance the program. Procedurally, before this becomes an ordinance before the council, you do certain four particular steps. First, you develop a transit improvement program, and under the state legislation, it has to describe in reasonable detail the projects and services you project providing. It has to provide these specific, six specific pieces of information, that's simply the surcharge you're going to apply, the termination date of the surcharge, any other sources of funding, the estimates of the initial and recurring costs, the implementing agencies, who's going to implement this? Is it Public Works? Is it your transit system? And lastly, the location, the geographic location of the projects you're going to implement. Next step is essentially outreach. You must solicit public input, solicit public comment, part of the process that brings us here tonight. You must make reasonable efforts to notify or coordinate with other surrounding local governments, and lastly, you must prepare a plan of financing. The plan of financing must itself demonstrate the financial feasibility of the proposed transit plan, and it has to specifically include the methodology and assumptions used, and what amount of the program's infrastructure is going to finance through the issuance of bonds or other debt. And the analysis of that financing has to be based on at least a 10-year period. There is an accounting procedural step. First, you have to request from the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury approval for the selection of an independent certified public accounting firm. And then you have to also obtain the approval from the comptroller, the procedures that that CPA firm will use when it renders its determination or opinion of your plan of financing. You then submit the plan of financing to the CPA firm, and then that firm is obligated, and here's the meat of what they're required to do, they are to provide a reasonable basis for the local government's forecast or projections. Lastly, the local government has to publish the completed financial feasibility determination or opinion from the CPA firm on its website, and Metro has done so. Then you get to the Metro Council. The procedural steps would be the filing of an ordinance. It has to contain a brief summary of the transit improvement plan, and by statute, it has to be, number one, clear and coherent. It has to use words with a common and everyday meaning. It cannot exceed 250 words, and in our case, it's 231. It comes under the wire. And lastly, it has to include the same six categories of information that were in the initial project: the surcharges, the termination date, other sources of funding, estimates, the implementing agencies, and the location of the projects. When it's before the Metro Council, it will be up for approval or disapproval on third and final reading. Under the state legislation, it requires a majority vote of the local government's legislative body. Under the Metro Council Charter, a majority vote is a majority vote of all members to which the council is entitled. As many of you know, we have lost a council member who is no longer a council member, is now a general sessions judge. We have 39 members. Nevertheless, we would have to have 21. If members of the council are sick or absent on the night of third reading, you still need 21 votes for approval. If it is not approved by 21 votes, the process ends. If it is approved, then a certified copy is sent to the Election Commission with a "request" to hold a referendum election, but under state law, they would be directed to schedule that election on May 1st, 2018. And then a copy is provided to the Department of Revenue. Then, as for the referendum election, there are two requirements under state law. First, the ballot. The ballot has to have a proposed surcharge described in it. It has to include the brief summary of the program identical to what it appeared in the ordinance, the same 231 words before you, and then an option for the public to vote for or against. It requires majority approval of registered voters, but just the registered voters who show up and vote, not all registered voters in the county. In the referendum election, the approval or disapproval process is, if it is not approved, you cannot return to this council with a similar surcharge for a period of 12 months. If it is approved, the Metro Government then furnishes a certified copy to the Tennessee Department of Revenue within 10 days. The Metro Government, government could not collect, however, any of the surcharges until the first day of the month occurring at least 60 days after the approval date. Because May has 31 days and June has 30, you could begin collecting effective July 1st of 2018 at the earliest. Any surcharge would then apply only to tax periods from October 1st of 2017 by state law. Lastly, the duration and oversight of the charges. The surcharges would last until one of three things occurs: either the date specified within the ordinance, and there is no date specified within the ordinance, B, the occurrence of a condition of termination described in the ordinance, and that's what the ordinance provides. Lastly, is the surcharge is repealed in the same manner as adopted, that is, by public referendum. And lastly, there would be continued oversight by the comptroller of the state for the financing and operations of the program. They have to be accounted for in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, and the comptroller receipt retains the authority to audit the revenues and expenditures and the program financing and operations, and to charge a reasonable fee therefore. And that is a summary of the Transit Improvement Program Legislative Process.
Thank you, Mr. Jameson. Two things I did omit at the beginning. First, there are people waiting outside, so after you speak, please feel free to leave the chamber so other people can come in. And secondly, this Thursday, the council will hold a committee meeting of the whole, where representatives from the mayor's office, as well as anybody they like to bring to explain the, both the referendum and the project, will be here to answer questions from council members. The reason we're having the public hearing first is so that the council members can hear from their constituents and then pursue the questions that they feel are appropriate from the administration on Thursday. I'll come back to you after the public hearing. So with that, I would acknowledge elected officials. If they would like to come forward, I know Mayor Kim McMillan from Clarksville is here. And Mayor Howard Bradley is here as well. The floor is yours.
Good evening. I am Kim McMillan, mayor of the city of Clarksville, the second-largest city in Middle Tennessee. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you today about the importance of transit opportunities for our area. As chair of the Regional Transportation Authority Board, I have been fortunate to be involved in the creation and passage of the RTA/MTA In-Motion Strategic Plan, which calls for a bold vision for high-capacity transportation in our region. We know that Middle Tennessee is a large and fast-growing region that is expected to grow by 1 million people in just the next 25 years. A lot of change is coming to us all, not just in Nashville, but in the entire region at a very fast pace. We have an opportunity now to make a difference and to ensure the continued prosperity, but we have to work together. Nashville is the center of that region, and it is leading the charge for transit because a regional transit plan must start in Davidson County to be effective. The people of Middle Tennessee cannot wait any longer. We need new transportation options so that more people doesn't mean more gridlock. I am confident that if Nashville passes the referendum, momentum will build in nearby and neighboring cities and counties to step up and follow suit. In Clarksville, we look forward to working with Davidson County to begin building out the regional transportation system for the future. Suffice it to say, we believe, on behalf of the Regional Transportation Authority, that a transit referendum needs to be on the ballot for the May 1 elections. And in conclusion, just let me say to all of you that as mayor of the home to the famous monkey's hit song of the 60s, I certainly hope that in my lifetime, I will have the opportunity to take the last train to Clarksville. Thank you all very much.
Vice Mayor Bradley, members of the council. I am Howard Bradley, Robertson County Mayor. Hopefully, most people in the chamber know that we are your neighbor to the due north. We are a community of about 70,000 people. What you may not know is that about 65% of the people that are employed who live in Robertson County migrate out of the county to go to work. The vast majority of those people come here to Nashville. They are seeking a safe and efficient and convenient way to get to work, and I think you can tell by the sheer volume of people that are doing that, that is essential for our economic well-being. And so we ask you tonight to consider the fact that while you are making this decision in terms of putting this initiative on the referendum by yourself, you are not making that decision just for yourselves, because you are being asked to take a leap of faith, a leap of faith not just in the future of Nashville, but a leap of faith in the future of greater Nashville, and that is to build the hub that we can in turn build the connections to. Because without the hub, the connections will not be built. We look to you, because you are our capital city, and because you are the center of greater Nashville, of which all the counties contiguous to you are part of, to take that leap of faith and to allow the voters of Davidson County to express their will. I think that you will find an amazing amount of support for this initiative once it comes to our turn, but quite simply, the spokes cannot be built before the hub. We look to you on May 1st to empower the voters of Davidson County to put that on the initiative. So once again, as I said before, remember, you are making this decision by yourselves, but you are not making it just for yourselves, and I'm convinced that generations yet to come will look back on the vision of this council, and the vision of this mayor, and the vision of these collective communities, and say, you have changed our world for the better. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Bradley. Thank you, Mayor McMillan. We appreciate your coming. So with that, I'm going to try and run the timer here. Let's go.
Good evening. My name is Peter Mallett. I'm executive vice president of Mahery Medical College, and I'm speaking on behalf of President James Hildreth, who sends his regrets at being unable to join us this evening. I would like to thank you so much for providing an opportunity to speak for just a very short moment on the important topic of a robust transit system and why it is important to Mahery. As many of you know, for over 140 years, our mission and our passion has been to improve the health and health care of minority and underserved communities. Unfortunately, many of, one of the challenges frequently voiced by many of the persons we serve is that they have difficulty making it to scheduled appointments because of a lack of reliable and affordable transportation. This is particularly problematic for many of our older Nashvillians, many of whom are living on fixed incomes but have very real health needs. Similarly, many of our students who live off-campus and do not have vehicles are challenged by the prospect of living off-campus and having to find a way to get to class, lab, or clinic. A re-envisioned transit system would mean that people in our community would have ready access to preventive health care; it would not be relegated to being picked up during a moment of crisis. Similarly, our students could focus on getting health care training, which would enable them to finish, get their doctorates, and stay and serve the people of Tennessee. The people in this room have the determination, the ability, and the sagacity to address this challenge. We at Mahery thank you for this opportunity, for these brief comments, and we look forward to being part of the discussion and part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Forrest Harris. I'm president of American Baptist College and director Vanderbilt's Kelly Mill Smith Institute on Black Church Studies. I'm delighted to appear before the council to give public comments in support of a transit improvement plan. I have watched Nashville evolve to become a major cosmopolitan center for diverse cultures, religious, civic enrichment, job growth, and expansive educational institutions and opportunities. The pace of community advancement, connecting neighborhood to neighborhood, greenway trails make Nashville a desirable city in which to live, work, and recreate. With growth comes the challenge for Nashville to sustain growth, prosperity, and flourishing for every citizen and every neighborhood. This is why I support Mayor Barry's Let's Move Nashville Transit Plan to create access to better transportation, transportation across the city. This is an opportunity to improve every neighborhood and every pocket of our community, to make sure that every community and neighborhood has access to transportation that gives them the opportunity to connect their lives and livelihoods to good jobs, to community transformation, and to development. I'm proud to be a part of Nashville, or citizen of Nashville, but I'm also going to be even prouder when Nashville transforms all of Nashville through plans like the transit plan that's proposed. Thank you.
My name is Andy Borchers. I live at 3800 Hoggett Ford in Kevin Rotten's district. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of Nashvillians who struggle with traffic. My transit story started six years ago when I began riding the Music City Star to my work at Lipscomb University. And one of the things I've observed is that when transit's available and competitive, people will choose transit over gridlock. I see the same people ride the Music City Star day in and day out for years. Our problem is that we have a scarcity of options. The Star has a limited schedule and only supports some riders. We need more transit options for this community. Indeed, if we think about our transit approach, it basically seems to be cars, cars, or cars. And that puts, I believe, Nashville at significant risk in the future. Risk when we run out of roadways, risk if the price of gasoline were to go up, risk as the livability of our city gets swallowed up in congestion. When I look at transit statistics from All Transit, and I encourage you to Google that, the All Transit site shows Nashville 65th out of the 75 largest cities in the United States in an overall transit statistics. In their listing of cities over 100,000, we're 211th out of 293. It's a sore thumb for a city that has so much potential for growth and for opportunity. All of the cities that we seemingly compete with, Charlotte, and Austin, and Denver, and all these other cities, have much stronger transit. So I want to urge you, and the council, and Kevin particularly, to vote in favor of this and get the people of Nashville the choice to vote on this item, and that's May. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jason Rogers. I have the privilege of serving as vice president for administration and university council at Belmont University in Nashville. I'm joined here at the podium by Dr. Glenda Glover, who's the president of Tennessee State, who wished us to show her support by standing as I speak to this issue. I am privileged to live and work in Davidson County, a 33-year resident, a proud resident of the Forest Hills community under the representation of Councilwoman Henderson, and employed under the council leadership of Berkeley Allen in the Belmont University area. I'm here on behalf of Belmont University, our president Bob Fisher, and the students, faculty, and staff who signed a petition in support of placing the transit referendum on the ballot this May. I'm proud to report that Belmont's excitement for transit expansion resulted in Belmont securing more petition signatures than any of the more than 100 corporations, institutions, and organizations who are partnered in the Transit Now Coalition. The Belmont community's enthusiasm for transit expansion has grown out of the institution's history of supporting mass transit in Nashville. Belmont students come to us from all over the United States and several foreign countries. Providing them mobility when they arrive is an important part of their being able to maximize their educational experience of being at Belmont in Nashville. Through our partnership with MTA and RTA, students and employees of the university for many years have boarded MTA buses free of charge to them, on average, over 3,800 times a month for the past few years, and have secured free passes for the RTA's Relax and Ride in Music City Star 370 times a month over the same period. Belmont covers 100% of the cost of these benefits, so our campus family can have car-free options to commute to and from Belmont's campus. We would expect to be an even bigger customer for what will be a vastly improved system under this plan. At Belmont, we have a combined total of almost 10,000 students, faculty, and staff, and we understand that every member of the Belmont community who does not bring a campus lessens the load on Nashville streets. We also have an interest in decreasing the demand for parking on our campus. Please support the ballot initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Excel Gonzalez. Sorry, I'm a little short. And I represent Futuro. I currently live on Dickerson Pike. I just pretty much want to let you guys know, when I was in high school, I had an internship at Legislative Plaza, and it was really hard for me to go to my internship because the buses wouldn't come so frequently. And I just want to let you guys know that I appreciate, appreciate you guys hearing me out, and it just really means a lot for students to have that transportation to go to opportunities like the internship I had. I appreciate you guys hearing me out, and please let it be on the ballot. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Bradley, and I live at 4248 Jamesboro Place, and Russ Polley is my councilperson. I serve as the Assistant Vice Chancellor for Community and Local Government Relations at Vanderbilt, and I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak on transit. Tonight, I'm officially representing both Vanderbilt University and Vanderbilt University Medical Center on behalf of Chancellor Zepos and Dr. Jeff Balzer. With over 26,000 employees, With over 26,000 employees, Vanderbilt University and Vanderbilt University Medical Center together constitute the largest private employer in the Nashville region. Vanderbilt's student body includes more than 12,500 students and more than 60,000 visitors each year. In addition, each and every year, there are more than 2 million inpatient and clinic visits to the Vanderbilt University Medical Center. Clearly, transportation is a critical component to all we do. The vibrancy of any enterprise depends to a great deal on the mobility of those involved. As citizens, the ability to easily, safely, conveniently get from one place to another is key to our personal and economic well-being. I want to be very clear tonight. Vanderbilt University and Vanderbilt University Medical Center are unequivocal in their support for the Transit Initiative. Make no mistake, our official stance on this issue is always—is and always has been one of support. In 2004, Vanderbilt was the very first to embrace the early easy-ride program, which allows us to pay MTA for Vanderbilt employees and students to ride the bus. We continue that program today. Since that time, Nashville has been expanding exponentially, but despite the opportunity that growth offers, it must not become a burden. And we need to act now to keep that from happening. Vanderbilt University and Vanderbilt University Medical Center, join the mayor in acknowledging the urgency of this issue. We support a bold transit agenda and urge the council to accept this challenge and the needed actions that go with it, especially in terms of allowing the public to vote on transit. Again, thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to approach you and to bring this subject matter to the forefront. My name is Victor Barrios, and I live at 1075 Sunset Road. I sit on the board of the Tennessee Latin American Chamber of Commerce, and I am here representing 262 small businesses, most of which conduct business in Davidson County. I'm also the owner, president, and CEO of Titan Franchising, DBA J. and King of Nashville, who has—who works with 103 franchisees, who employ over 400 people in Davidson—who live mainly in Davidson County. The reason I wanted to speak today is to shed light on how mass transit will improve the life of a number of those people who I represent and employ. Currently, our community is struggling with transportation to and from work. Employers are having to make do with employees that either can't come to work or are extremely late for their shifts, hurting the goods and services that they provide our community. From the employer perspective, they tell us—from the employee's perspective, I'm sorry—they tell us that it is becoming increasingly more difficult to make it to work on time due to all the congestions on the roads, placing their jobs in jeopardy. Not to mention, we need a more cost-effective solution for them. I ask Metro Council to let the people of Nashville vote for more transit options in May. It's time to get this handled. Thank you, and have a good night.
Good evening. My name's Dan Hogan. I live at 2202 Belmont Boulevard, ably represented by Councilwoman Berkeley Allen. I'm representing the Nashville Technology Council tonight. I also am a past president of Entrepreneurs Organization. I started a technology firm about 10 years ago, and throughout the course of the growth of my business, starting it in the front bedroom and then moving into office spaces all over the city—German Town, Music Row, The Nation's East Nashville—somewhere about six years ago, seven years ago, my employees stopped asking me about our new office space and will I be able to walk to the gym. The questions all were about concerns around traffic. Additionally, over the course of the last decade, trying to recruit people, top talent from other cities that have much more robust transportation options, I've run into some stumbling blocks. You know, not being able to pull people from San Francisco and Boston and some of these areas that have invested in transportation meant that they couldn't rely on the—the transportation system here, and that's been an impediment to us. Inaction on this issue is the quickest way to choke the golden goose of prosperity for small businesses like myself. In fact, Entrepreneurs Organization, an organization of over 200 members here in the Middle Tennessee area that employ 9,000 Middle Tennesseans and do about $2 billion in economic activity in this area every year, surveyed our membership in October. 73% of us support this plan as written. Please put this on the ballot, and I thank you very much for having the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Riley and members of the council. My name is Cher Powers. I live in Nashville on East Riverwood Drive in District 7, so hello to Councilman Anthony Davis. I am president of the Board of Directors of the Greater Nashville Realtors, which represents 4,400 Realtor members. The Greater Nashville Realtor Board of Members voted to support the mayor's transit plan, and we ask that the council take—the council take the appropriate steps now to place the issue on the ballot. Our organization is a founding member of the Transit for Nashville Coalition, and we are fully engaged on the subject and have been for many years. Realtors have—excuse me—Realtors have participated in the end-motion discussions, served on moving-forward committees, and have provided funding for over seven years for the Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee's Transit Citizens Leadership Academy. The program has educated hundreds of leaders in the Middle Tennessee region about the challenges and importance of mass transit. Realtors have a front-row seat when it comes to the issues that mass transit will address in Nashville: access to affordable housing, jobs, mobility, the quality of life and safety. The mayor's plan addresses each of these subjects, and those are all topics Realtors discuss with clients each day. Our organization supports the plan and opportunity for Nashvillians to vote on this plan. As a Realtor myself, I work with a lot of entry-level buyers and first-time buyers. I've found that many of those clients have only one car in their household, and they make decisions on where they can live based on the proximity to their jobs and availability of public transportation. With both median prices for homes and rental costs rising, affordable housing can require that they live further away from downtown and their jobs, which requires transportation solutions that work for them. For example, this past year—I want to thank you for your time. Please vote for the Transit Plan.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mark Roland, AIA 6670 Jocelyn Hall Road, and I'm a proud resident of Minna Johnson's district. I am also the current president of the American Institute of Architects, Middle Tennessee Chapter. We have approximately 750 members in the Middle Tennessee area. Our members are passionate about the viability and future of the region. Growth in metropolitan Nashville over the last 30 years has been phenomenal. New cultural amenities like sports programs, entertainment venues, recreational opportunities, and the airport expansion lead to a better quality of life and increased population. Our members and I are happy to see previously underutilized areas of the city, such as the Gulch, become vibrant and diverse neighborhoods. But with an average of 100 people per day moving here, our transportation system is quickly approaching a breaking point. Adding lanes to the interstates and primary arteries are simply not an option due to the density of developments abutting them, especially inside the Riley Parkway Loop. Increasing the number of buses and bus services can only take us so far, and the self-driving car revolution is not going to solve all of our transit woes either. The time has come for us to take a bold step forward, joining other great cities of the world by providing a transit system commensurate with our city's place in the world. Denver, Portland, Salt Lake are great examples of cities that have invested in their transportation systems and are thriving, vibrant cities as a result. As an architect and planner, I am pleased to see the proposal to increase density along transit corridors under consideration. Zoning incentives, like allowing developers to build greater density and decreasing parking requirements along primary transit lines, will not only encourage development, will also encourage sustainable development. We're at a pivotal point in our city's history, and I believe that you are up to the task. Be bold, and as renowned architect Daniel Burnham once said, "Make big plans, aim high, and hope and work." On behalf of the 750 members that represent, I ask you to please allow us to vote.
Good evening. My name is Fatma Abraham, and I leave—and I live at 315 Weaver Drive in District 13. I'm a senior at Hume-Fogg, and I'd like to voice my support on behalf of Stop-Take Notice. Stop-Take Notice was inspired by the loss of Hume-Fogg student Elena Zemmour, who was hit and killed by a semi-truck while walking the crosswalk at Rosa Parks Boulevard and Church Street. We seek to remind the downtown community of the necessity of driver pedestrian awareness and safety. From personal experience as a Hume-Fogg student, I've seen firsthand the difficulty that sidewalk closings and construction posted traffic mobility. Attempting to navigate our urban core is already a challenge, and these obstacles make the ride home from school even longer. I've been watching downtown grow for my spot on Broadway since 2014. As it becomes increasingly more difficult to navigate downtown Nashville by car, I want to know that I have more options. Outside of downtown, as a student without a car, I will rest easy knowing that I can travel from neighborhood to neighborhood using public transport. I want Nashville to be known not for its inaccessibility, but for the ease and security of our public transportation system. We think that this builds a tremendous step in reducing the burden on those who do not own cars and in making sure that we have affordable transportation options. Additionally, we appreciate the significant funding in the plan for sidewalks and crosswalks as it is essential to a safe transport hub. The addition of sidewalks and crosswalks will help mitigate the incontinuity that currently plagues our downtown corridor. It's the opinion of Stop-Take Notice that less traffic makes everyone happier. Thank you for your time. All of us at Stop-Take Notice encourage you to lend your support to this measure.
Hello. My name is Princess Dang, and I live at 516 Weefield Way in District 22. I'm a senior at Hume-Fogg Academic High School, and I'm part of the MTA Youth Action Team. We are a diverse group of high school students that advocate for accessible transportation options in Nashville and the use of public transportation among young people. The Youth Action Team was key process of making bus transportation free of charge to all MNPS students. We host public events that help youth understand public transportation and what it takes to make it work. As a student in downtown, I want young people to be able to have more accessibility for public transportation in Nashville, and this Transit Plan is a big step in that right direction. This plan would allow young people like me to find and explore many opportunities in Nashville. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Casey Anderson. I live at 1401 61st Avenue North, proud member of Team Mary Carolyn Roberts. Appreciate all the work she does. I've been living in Nashville 29 years now and have witnessed the growth of our city firsthand. This was a sleepy town 29 years ago, and it certainly is not anymore. For 11 years, I had the privilege of serving as the executive director of the Nashville Academy of Medicine. And while I was there, we started a program called Bridges to Care Plus, which is now Project Access Nashville. We provided, during my tenure, over $33 million of free care to those Nashvillians who are uninsured and 200% or below of poverty. And access to the bus system was absolutely critical in getting those patients where they needed to be. I can tell you that even 10 years ago, the structure of our city and the infrastructure, our bus system was not adequate to serve their needs 10 years ago, and we all know how that problem has exasperated itself over time. I am currently the executive director of the American Council of Engineering Companies of Tennessee and the Tennessee Society of Professional Engineers, which has given me the opportunity to get way in the weeds on the transit and infrastructure issues that we have in our city and our state. Hundreds of dedicated folks have spent thousands of hours looking at transit. We've looked at the what, we've looked at the why, and we've looked at the how. And we've worked really hard at the state level to make sure that the cities and the citizens across our state have the opportunity to have their say about transit in their own communities. All we're asking for now is that Nashville takes advantage of that and gives our citizens the opportunity to make that decision for themselves. I really appreciate all of the work that you all do every day, day in and day out. I know how hard it is. I just really urge you to put this on the ballot, and let's let the citizens of Nashville have their say on this. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pete Wooton. I reside at 2245 Cherokee Station Drive, Council District 24. I'm the vice chair of Moving Forward, which is a volunteer organization made up of business, community, and transit leaders throughout Middle Tennessee. We're dedicated to the creation of a regional transportation solution for our region, and we've spent the past two years looking at experiences of other communities across the country, both what's worked and what hasn't worked. And we've issued a scorecard on the progress being made right here in Middle Tennessee over the past two years and an annual report with recommendations on public engagement, challenges, and advantages in designing a transit system for our region, and what funding mechanisms could be used to fund a system. Our task forces have examined the proposed Let's Move Nashville Transit Plan for Davidson County and the financing plan. This plan addresses the criteria that we have found creates a robust system. It gives options for people to move throughout Davidson County, which we anticipate will result in a system that ultimately does a better job of moving people throughout the entire region. So we know that we're behind, and we know if we don't do something now, with all the growth we see, we'll be further behind, and it will cost even more to catch up later. Nashville residents need expanded transportation options to preserve the quality of life that has made our community special, and so we ask today that you allow the citizens of Davidson County the opportunity to vote on this plan.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Smith. I'm here representing Barge Design Solutions at 615 Third Avenue South in District 19 with Councilman O'Connell. And we're here in support of putting transit on the ballot because we understand some important realities. The people at Barge have spent our careers as engineers and planners in community development. We understand the complexity of transportation systems, and we understand that effective or ineffective transportation directly impacts the opportunities that people have to get a good job, live in a place that they can afford, and enjoy their lives as they balance time between work, friends, family, and whatever else they choose to spend their time on. Regarding transit specifically, the plan that's been presented is a good overall plan. Of course, there are questions about the tunnel, the cost, the return on investment, autonomous vehicles, and many other details. Regarding the tunnel, there's numerous tunnels already built under Nashville, and it's the only way to create new real estate downtown. Regarding costs, the plan is a fraction of what we will pay directly in the future if we don't act now. And you can't even calculate the cost of lost opportunity, and the other indirect tangible costs such as lost mixed-income housing development, decreased ability to attract and retain good businesses, and many others. Regarding autonomous vehicles, the reality is that trains, buses, and autonomous vehicles can work together. They are not substitutes for each other, and nothing in the plan will hinder development of autonomous vehicle technology. We know that there's many opinions. We know that no one solution will solve all of the challenges or take advantage of all the opportunities, but the plan is good. Good execution will obviously be critical, and it would be a big mistake to stop the process now. But the question today is not really do we support transit? The question is do we allow the voters in Nashville to determine their own destiny? We're at a critical turning point in the history and the future of our metropolitan area. The debate about the merits of the plan can continue, but please put the question to the people on May 1st.
Vice Mayor Riley, members of the council. I'm Cyril Stewart. I live at 3813 Whitland Avenue in Councilwoman Kathleen Murphy's district. I'm representing the Nashville Civic Design Center, where I'm vice president of the Board of Directors. In my role with the Civic Design Center as an architect and as a planner, and personally, I strongly believe in mass transit as an essential element to vibrant cities. But we're not here tonight—to night—to debate mass transit. We are here to decide whether to hear from the citizens of Nashville in a referendum. At the Civic Design Center, a foundational principle is engagement of the residents of this great city. Hearing their voice is an essential element of any civic initiative. On behalf of the staff and the board of the Nashville Civic Design Center, and personally, I urge you to vote yes to continue our transit conversation and to put this— I urge you to vote yes to continue our transit conversation and to put this to our citizens on the May referendum. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Johnson, and I live at 2720 Ackland Avenue. I want to thank Councilwoman Berkeley Allen for her strong leadership in our community. I'm the Executive Director of the Nashville Business Coalition, whose members represent businesses of all sizes and industries that are vital to the financial and commercial growth in this economically vibrant city of Nashville. A majority of our board members live, work, and are employers here and are invested in the vitality of Davidson County and its workforce. We believe that addressing transit is necessary to sustain growth and attract a competent workforce. Our concern is that the commutes to and from work do not negatively impact our quality of life. We appreciate your service and ask that you give those who use and pay for transit the opportunity to make this decision. Please put transit on the ballot. Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Ralph Schulz. I'm the CEO of the Nashville Area Chamber. I represent over 2,000 members in this area as the CEO of the Chamber, but I'm also a resident of Davidson County in Angie Henderson's district. So just want you to know I'm speaking from both of those perspectives. The Nashville Area Chamber is one of the first to join the Transit for Nashville Coalition because we recognize that the positive change that Mayor Berry's Let's Move Nashville Plan will set into motion is going to benefit this entire community and this entire region. We believe that improving transit is about two basic things. One, improving access, that is creating opportunity for every resident of this area to enjoy the advantages of the prosperity in this area, and jobs. We know that prosperity occurs when jobs are created, and jobs are created when workforce is available. And when workforce can be connected to those jobs, we know that the whole region and this whole community benefits. So we are for transit because it makes great economic sense, particularly as it connects people to opportunity throughout this community. We know that there will be jobs created by this transit program, and we know that those jobs will be created for a long time, not just in the private sector, but also in the construction activity. So in closing, we want to underline the Chamber's support for the Transit Improvement Program. We urge you to support this bill. Put this item before the voters on May 1st of this year, and let them make the choices about their future mobility. Thank you.
My name is Gary Pope. Live at 6295 Mountview Road. And first of all, I would just want to thank you for your time, being attentive, and to tell you that you are one good-looking bunch of councilmen and women. Now, as you know, I'm sure everyone has heard, over 100 families, individuals are moving into Nashville every day. We spend hours of time in traffic. The average person spends about $1,300 in additional costs because of sitting in traffic. Now, I live out close to Perciprese Lake. I have to work my way over to Murphysburg Road and then on over to I-24, and it's ridiculous trying to get into town. I am not a productive family member, citizen, employee when I'm sitting in traffic. Like some of the others said, I've been late occasionally, try not to be. But this reminds me of 20 years ago when we had to vote to bring the Tennessee Titans into town. And I know most of you will say that that was good. So now, we need a transit plan. So I want you all to know that I am for the transit plan, and I want all the registered voters to get involved and support this initiative. And I hope that you're not only looking at what's a direct benefit to yourself, I say if it's good for Nashville, it's good for Tennessee, it's good for the USA. So please, let's do this. We need all the support we can get. Now, I want to also say that if I'm not mistaken, so far, we are 100%, the speakers that have come up, for the initiative. I want to remind you of that, 100%. Thank you all for your time. Have a great day.
Good evening. My name is Joe McAlip. I live in Williamson County, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the Tennessee Sierra Club, a statewide organization with 5,820 members and supporters living in Davidson County. I'm the Chair of the Transit Committee for the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club is most supportive of the mayor's improved transit plan because we are worried about the buildup of carbon dioxide emissions over the city and the impact of those emissions on both our air quality and public health. Carbon dioxide is emitted from the tailpipe of hundreds of thousands of cars and trucks on the interstates and city streets 24 hours a day. To put it in perspective, published studies conducted by the Union of Concerned Scientists show that for every single gallon of gasoline burned in a vehicle's engine, 19 pounds of carbon dioxide is emitted directly out of the tailpipe. Carbon dioxide is a greenhouse gas that is known to trap heat in the atmosphere and contribute significantly to climate change. Additionally, we all breathe in it. The livable Nashville Committee in 2017 published a report showing that from 2005 to 2014, the carbon dioxide emissions from transportation sources increased by 312,670 metric tons in Nashville. Thus, in 2014, the transportation sources alone contributed more than 4,986,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide in Nashville. That is a whopping 37% of the total carbon dioxide emissions in Nashville-Davidson County. What will it be in 25 years if we don't do anything, and Nashville continues to grow at its projected rate? The mayor's transit plan is a great start to reduce vehicles on the road, put people into rapid, and improve transit and improve mobility in Nashville. Someone once said that great cities depend on movement, on the ability of millions of people to move daily with ease. We support this. We hope you'll put it on the referendum. Thank you.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Joanne Graves, and I'm from Sumner County. I'm the CEO of the Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee. We're a regional organization based here in Nashville, working to bring a regional transit system to the 10-county region. We have some 4,300 members, and most of them, a good portion of them, reside right here in Davidson County. Thousands of citizens from these surrounding counties travel into Nashville each day to provide a vital workforce to this area. At the same time, as Nashville is thriving, 100 people a day are moving into this area and taking up residency. As a result, congestion on our roads is growing and growing each and every day, and making our commute times longer and longer, no matter where you live. In order to sustain the quality of life that all of us have come to love about this region, we need a transit system. Nashville is the beginning of that transit system. You are the hub. We support this transit system. I urge you to put it on the ballot for May 1st, and let the people vote. Thank you. It's a difficult decision, but I appreciate your service.
I am Jessica Dauphin. I live at 7144 Riverfront Drive, represented by Dave Rosenberg. I want to let you know I was born in Chatham County, raised in Chatham County. I have lived, rented, and owned properties in Davidson, Rutherford, and Sumner Counties. I'm here today to voice my support for the transit plan. All I can do is speak from personal experience. And about three years ago, I moved out to Bellevue, and at that time, I could make my way into downtown to work in about 20 to 25 minutes reliably. Over the last three years, though, that travel time has gone to 30, sometimes 40 minutes and 45 minutes, depending on the snarl of traffic I hit on my way. Well, I spend way too much time in traffic. I'm not as good and productive at work as I would like to be. I'm not as good and productive at home with my four-year-old son as I'd like to be. And of course, I'm dealing with the negative effects of stress, of sitting in traffic, and taking my life in my own hands sometimes when I'm out there. So many of the folks in my neighborhood feel the same way. I also talk to some folks in my neck of the woods who say the plan doesn't go far enough and doesn't reach far enough into Bellevue. My response is always, we got to start somewhere. I believe that building a transit infrastructure is beneficial and a good investment for our city and our region. It will improve our quality of life and continue supporting our economic prosperity. This transit plan will add more bus service to Bellevue and a light rail out to White Bridge Road, which is awesome, and hopefully take quite a few cars off the road along my commute, freeing up some space for me, maybe eventually making my commute a little better, or at least keep it from getting worse. And that is worth the price of admission for me. I could talk about me all night, but this plan is not about me. This plan is a starting point for us for convenient, accessible public transportation for Davidson County, and I hope you vote for it. Thanks.
My name is John Dab. I reside at 5108 Dakota Avenue in Councilmember Kathy Murphy's district. I am Chairman of the Board of the Harpeth Conservancy. Harpeth Conservancy is a nonprofit corporation whose vision is clean water and healthy ecosystems for rivers in Tennessee, championed by the people who live here. Our mission is to restore and protect clean water and healthy ecosystems for rivers in Tennessee by employing scientific expertise and collaborative relationships to develop, promote, and support broad community stewardship and action. Harpeth Conservancy has approximately 2,000 members statewide. In excess of 500 of Harpeth Conservancy's members reside in Nashville. An important part of Harpeth Conservancy's mission is the restoration and protection of the Harpeth River, which is a state scenic river flowing through Davidson County. The Harpeth River is perhaps the most heavily recreated river in the state, enjoyed by 500,000 visitors annually, most of them from the Nashville area. Harpeth Conservancy is interested in and supports allowing Nashville residents to vote on the proposed transit plan for two reasons. First, responsible planned and managed growth is essential to protect and improve the water quality in Middle Tennessee's rivers. Transit, with its effects on land use and air quality, is an important component of responsible, planned, and managed growth. Second, we firmly believe that such important matters must be decided upon by the people who are affected by them. I also have a personal reason for wanting to see the people of Nashville be able to vote on transit issues. I moved here about 10 years ago from Los Angeles. Getting out of the traffic changed my life. However, I've experienced the substantial growth of Nashville, and unfortunately, the lack of planning and the development of this growth and the additional traffic issues have resulted in significantly increased traffic. It is critical that transit issues be addressed. We hope to see this on the ballot in May. Thank you.
My name's Scott Heflinger. I reside at 120 Lakeside Drive in North Davidson County. I'm here to say that my wife and I support improved transit opportunities and hope the council will let their voters decide about transit by putting it on referendum in May. A few of my experiences with transit systems include, in my early career, working downtown and living in South Nashville, I rode the bus every day to work. Not only did I enjoy having someone else drive and not having to worry about parking, but it also saved my family a ton of money because we didn't have to have a second car. I think in the future, the proposed transit plan will help young families equally. Now that we live in Northern Davidson County, my wife and I have ridden the bus from Rivergate multiple times to downtown and to Vanderbilt. However, this usage has been very limited by frustratingly limited schedules of the express bus from Rivergate. My wife and I travel to many cities within and outside of our country, and have enjoyed using public transportation when available. It is convenient and inexpensive. On a fairly recent trip to Seattle, we enjoyed their light rail system, but heard from locals that it was quite late in coming and not planned well. It appears Nashville is on a much better track than that. Lastly, I'm also a member of the Sierra Club. With 5,800 members and supporters in the county, we as a club think improved public transportation options will help our overall environment by improving air quality with reduced carbon emissions, ozone levels, and other air pollutants. Improve stormwater runoff to our urban streams due to less cars on the road, and preservation of our natural environment by reducing urban sprawl and encouraging greenways. I thank you much for your attention.
So I don't have to do anything.
Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Waddell Wright. I live at 4487 Post Road, District 24. I'm a sixth-generation Nashvillian. I'm a real estate investor, real estate developer, and I'm an affordable housing champion. I chair the Board of Directors for Stone Street Housing Foundation, which is an affordable housing nonprofit development firm. I'm here to talk about the benefits of transit and transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented developments are essentially mixed-use, mixed-income, walkable neighborhoods. This means that for business owners or shopkeepers, the entire city will now be at your front door. So neighborhoods that used to suffer as food deserts now have the opportunity to have restaurants move into their neighborhoods, pay lower rent, and have the population within a train stop from their retail space. As far as the homeowners and the renters are concerned, the walkability of these communities are great in terms of services and healthcare. My grandma used to always say that a bad ride is better than a good walk. So when you have all the services next to you, that's better than trying to travel two miles to get out there to them. Too many people in Nashville are being left behind right now with being housing cost burdened. With 100 people a day coming in, the demand is driving down the supply, which is making the housing stock way more expensive than what it should be. One way to curb this is by revisiting land use policies and zoning and long-term incentives for all developers, not just a select few. There are cases for sustainable and resilient land use policies that can and will be implemented to go along with developments. The process should be market-led through public-private partnerships. Housing is becoming a commodity, so mixed-use to mixed-income neighborhoods that have a diversity in houses, races, and income would be a benefit to the entire city. HUD has published their federal appropriations bill. It's $56.5 billion. In that bill, it covers transportation, housing, and urban development, and community development. You got to have transportation with housing. Thank you.
I'm Davy Tucker. I live at 610 Fotherlin Street. I've been here in Nashville all my life. I've lived in Edgefield when Edgefield wasn't cool. So I have been a personal benefactor of all this going on in this city. As you've heard, everyone here is in favor of this going to the people. I like referendums, too, because it allows the people's voice to be heard. But while we're doing that, I think that there's still a job that you need to do. You need to recognize that transit is not an isolated issue, that there are other issues that are going to come along with this, that really need to be given some serious consideration. Nashville's trying to be progressive, and all of that's great. But while we're trying to do this, transportation is good, but hopefully we can do some things that are right. Fixing Metro General is right. Transportation may make things more efficient. Reforming a outdated policing department is right. Fixing the housing issues, those are right. Transportation is good. It makes things efficient, but you have the opportunity, every time you come in here, to do some right things, and I just pray that you'll do that. Thank you for this opportunity to address you.
My name is Kirsten Collier. I live at 3001 Hamilton Church Road, Unit 514, and I'm in Jacobia Dowell's district. And while in theory I agree that we need to do something about the transit, if you've ever tried to get to Antioch at any point during any rush hour, you realize what an exercise in futility that is, especially tonight since it's raining. I normally leave work at 4:30, 5:30, going by 4:40. I'm lucky if I get to the 24 exit, much less home by 6:00, 6:30. And I went to every one of those transportation meetings that they had, and I even went to the meeting on the 19th. And imagine my surprise when I was told that, oh, well, Antioch, you can have buses with connections, and you can Uber or Lyft over to those. Now, I know that this is something further on down the road, but an IKEA's coming to Antioch in 2020, there's other development coming to Antioch soon. Buses with connections, no one's gonna get off the car, out of their cars to have to get up earlier just to take an Uber or Lyft, to take a bus, then have to take an Uber or Lyft to their job. So like I said, in theory, I agree that transportation, we need something with transit, but you need to take a better look at the areas that need it the most. And I think light rail would be a better service for Antioch as opposed to taking the bus or taking a Lyft or Uber, dealing with connections just to get to work and get home. No one's gonna get out of their cars for that. So thank you for the time, and I hope you all have a great night.
My name is Lorette Casella. I've been a resident of Nashville since 1994, and I live at 6024 Gardendale Drive in Forest Hills. I'm represented by Councilmember Angie Henderson. I'm the owner of Casella Interiors, which is located at 1500 Fourth Avenue North in historic Germantown neighborhood, and I employ five designers. As a small business owner, I'm also an active member of the Nashville Chamber, and I'm currently serving for the third year as the Chair of the Chamber North Advisory Council. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my team at Casella Interiors, my family, and the Chambers North Area Advisory. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak about Let's Move Nashville. Business in Nashville has certainly benefited from growth. There's more workforce, more customers, more ideas, more investment, and more energy in our city than ever before. Yet, business has also experienced challenges from growth, one of the biggest being to move goods and our workforce easily around Nashville and our region. There are just too many cars on the road and not enough mass transit options. Our employees, vendors, and clients are increasingly spending more time on the road to get to work, meetings, and job sites. The Let's Move Transit Plan will create a better access for workers to get around Nashville more easily. Currently, two of my team members live in Bellevue, and when, not if, there's a wreck on I-40, it can take them up to an hour and a half to get to work. There are times it's so difficult for us to get to or go through downtown, we have to plan to leave 45 to 60 minutes to go to a meeting that's three to five miles away. In reviewing the Let's Move Nashville Plan, it is estimated that 76% of all Davidson County residents will live within a half mile of a bus, rapid bus, or light rail system, and it is also estimated that 89% of Davidson County jobs will be located within a half a mile of a bus, rapid bus, or light rail system. In addition to access, the transit plan will create new jobs during construction and with operation and maintenance, good-paying jobs that will generate wealth in this community. The build-out of the plan is anticipated to create nearly 45,000 jobs. It is time to move our city forward with mass transit systems that will tie Nashville and our region together. We must stop kicking the can down the road to the next generation. Please vote to put this Let's Move Nashville Plan on the ballot in May. Thank you.
I'm Carol Hudler. I live at 135 Wentworth Avenue, and I'm happy to say I'm represented by Angie Henderson. I'm the president of Cumberland Region Tomorrow, which is a nonprofit regional organization who advocates for quality growth approaches in the 10 counties of middle Tennessee. One of our six key regional priorities is an efficient and effective transportation system. We regularly hold discussions with groups of citizens from all the counties adjacent to Davidson, talking about what this means. And invariably, the opinion is that while the transportation issues are regional, solving them needs to begin in Nashville. The rest of the region is watching closely. Giving Nashvillians the chance to improve their transportation needs by letting them vote for the transit on the ballot is an important first step, and I thank you for letting me talk about that. Thank you.
Hello, members of Metro Council. My name is Nora Kern. I live at 938 West Eastland Avenue in District 5, and I am here to represent Walk-Bike Nashville. So transit is not in our name, but we are here to ask you to put transit on the ballot in May. We know that every transit trip starts on foot and bicycle. To be a great transit city, Nashville is going to have to also be a great city to walk and bike, and we all know that we are not there yet. Unfortunately, in the last five years, we have had over 88 members of our community killed while walking in our city. We also know that we have had countless more injured walking and biking. This is unacceptable. What we also know is that 35%, more than 35% of all those killed were killed on one of the streets included in the mayor's transit plan for light rail or rapid bus. This plan, therefore, is not only a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to invest in real transportation options, and there I mean not just light rail, which we're excited about, but also sidewalks and crosswalks, buses, bike lanes, and greenways, but this plan is also a critical opportunity to redo some of our most dangerous streets in our city. We may not have another chance to redo Gallatin and Dickerson and Charlotte and Murfreesboro and Nolansville. So we therefore hope you will allow our city to vote for a future that is safe, convenient, and welcoming to all who are getting around, no matter their method or means. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Janet Jernigan, Executive Director of 50 Forward. We have six locations in Davidson County. Our headquarters are located at 174 Raines Avenue, the gateway to the new soccer park. We're excited about that. We see a lot of revenue-producing opportunities for that. Annually, we serve about 20,000 older adults primarily in Davidson and Williamson Counties. As most of you know, the population age 60 and older is projected by the Haslam Business School at UT to increase over 33% from 2010 to 2020. In the last quarter century, I believe every study that I have seen done in this area for the needs of older adults, transportation difficulties are the number-one thing identified. We're particularly excited about the expansion of the Access Ride Program for older adults who have disabilities. Also, the focus midterm there on the Callaton Road Bordeaux area and long-term on the Nolansville Road area. Thank you all for your support of older adults for many years and for your, thank you in advance for your positive consideration of putting this on the ballot.
My name is Allison Bennett. I'm here representing Paramore Digital Marketing Agency. My address is unlisted, but I'll tell you that I live about halfway down Buffalo Road in Bellevue in District 35, where my family has lived for over 50 years. I'm born and raised and stayed here in Nashville. I rode the bus to work a few years ago, and I was proud to ride the bus to work. I was advocating for the bus riding to my coworkers. You don't have to drive, negating the opportunity for fender benders or flat tires or anything worse. You can read during your commute. I feel prepared when I get to the office because I'm not stressed about traffic or parking. Hannah Paramore, the owner of my company, scoffed at me. I can't have my employees riding the bus. Hannah Paramore now sits on the MTA Board after serving a year-and-a-half stint on the Moving Forward Committee at the Chamber on which I sat with her. During that time, she also begetting her husband, which is now her now-husband and golf pro, who also rode the bus to his then-metro job. I think that impacted her view on bus riders a little bit as well. But through my advocacy and now Hannah's advocacy, other members of our organization have begun to take note, especially after our office moved downtown into fancier digs in the downtown core. Now, not only was traffic harder to navigate, so is parking. Getting started presents some challenges, but after they get into the groove, the same pros and cons lists are said. I can get so much done. The walk to my stop is kind of treacherous and dangerous. I save money on gas and parking. I just wish the buses ran more often and later. People do want this option, and this plan only improves the current experience of mass and public transit in our city. Please consider adding this referendum to the ballot May 1st.
Good evening, members of City Council, including Councilman O'Connell. My name is Amy Thompson. I'm the Director of Corporate Relations at Lifeway Christian Resources located at 1 Lifeway Plaza. Tonight, I represent the 1,100 Lifeway employees who work in the downtown Nashville area. As commuters to downtown Nashville, we are in favor of adding the transit plan to the upcoming ballot. We've heard tonight from individuals and from businesses, new transit options will benefit Nashville workers as individuals, and at Lifeway, we maintain that new transit options will help businesses as well. Increased mobility to and around Nashville will aid in the recruitment of great employees and also the retention of those employees as well, not only for Lifeway but for other businesses in the downtown Nashville area. When we talk to potential employees, prospective employees about Nashville, it's an easy sell. We've been called an "it" city. We have professional sports teams. We have A-list concerts. We have award shows that we host. We have historic venues. With developments like the Gulch and Capital View and upcoming projects like Nashville Yards and Fifth and Broad, our area is growing and offering so much more in terms of housing, more entertainment, and more jobs. We have it all here in Nashville. We just have a hard time getting to it. The time to address Nashville's transit issues is now. It's time to add quality mass transit options to that list of what Nashville has to offer to its residents, its workers, and its tourists. We encourage the council tonight to place the issue of Nashville Transit on the ballot in May. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Al Pramick, and I'm the Chairman and CEO of Gresham Smith &amp; Partners. We're an architectural and engineering firm headquartered here in downtown Nashville. We've been here since 1967, and we really enjoyed last year's celebration of 50 years of business here in Nashville. I'm representing over 415 employees who are based here locally at the Institute 222, Second Avenue South in the vibrant Sobro District. So Vice Mayor Brawley, Councilman O'Connell, and members of the council appreciate the opportunity here to address you. As architects and engineers, we're really in the business of creating design solutions to help the communities and to help the communities to be healthier, more mobile, better connected, and we believe a transit program is an integral part, it's an integral component of an efficient and sustainable regional transportation system, and it must be implemented if we want to have and continue our community vitality that Nashville has appreciated over the years. The mayor's transit plan will improve access and provide options for connecting people with their workplaces, to their fun places, to the neighborhoods that they live in or want to visit, and transit will also, it will help in the congestion of vehicular traffic in terms of carbon emissions and in terms of having a lower carbon footprint. It's gonna improve the quality of life for our employees who have an easier commute, a more reliable commute. So accommodating our regional future population growth and managing congestion will be an essential part for propelling Nashville forward as a best-in-class city and maintaining this region as an appealing place to live, work, and play. So Councilman O'Connell and fellow council members, my request is simple. So on behalf of our employees, our 415 employees, I urgently seek your support by voting yea to put this transit referendum on the ballot in May of '18 so the people's voice can be measured by vote in support of this transit plan. Thank you.
My name is Ruby Baker. I live at 3222 Lee Wood Drive in Bordeaux Hills in District 1. I've served as President of our Bordeaux Hills Residential Association for several years, and we have been involved in the transit discussions with MTA, InMotion, RTA, the Northwest Corridor Study for some time because we focused our discussion on County Hospital Road, which is the arterial road that connects our neighborhood to Clarksville Pike and to Brawley Parkway. On most days, the traffic flows smoothly with a moderate number of vehicles, including the MTA bus and several commercial vehicles passing through. In the mornings, which normally a three-to-five-minute commute could take anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20 minutes because we have additional commuters coming from Ashland City, coming from adjacent counties, and this creates a gridlock on County Hospital Road. During our transit discussions with Northwest Corridor Study and with MTA, we expressed our concerns, and with this current transit plan, we see our concerns addressed in the first phase of this plan. We also see increased bus service and access ride improvements, which was one of the main concerns for our seniors in our neighborhood. We also see it connecting us to the adjacent communities that are directly connected to us. So we see walkability. We need more sidewalks, and we also need additional services that are in the later phases of this plan. There's still room for more discussion, but we are in support of the transit plan, and we ask that you put it on the May 1st ballot so the additional residents can support it as well. Thank you for your time.
My name is David Kells. I live at 1053 Gwin Drive, 37216. I am the Senior Vice President of Events and Marketing for the Nashville Predators and Bridgestone Arena. Tonight, I am here as a Nashville resident, an advocate for expanded mass transit options, and as a representative of Nashville Predators, Bridgestone Arena, and the Ford Ice Center. Thank you to all the council for your time tonight. With interest across the county, I'd like to give a special thanks to Freddie O'Connell, representing Bridgestone Arena, Jacobia Dowell, and Karen Johnson, representing the Ford Ice Center, Soon, Sherry Weiner, and Dave Rosenberg, representing the Bellevue Ice Center, and Nancy Van Reese as part of the Public Entertainment Facilities Committee and representing my home in Inglewood. On an average event night, we have over 700 to 900 event staff. These are our ushers, ticket takers, security folks, custodial crew, and others that don't have good transit options to get to and from downtown on event nights. During this weekend's Monster Jam run, we asked, had an informal survey of them. Many of them use buses for their day jobs but cannot, excuse me, cannot use them in the evenings to get to and from Bridgestone Arena. The same is true for our fans. Over 48% of our season ticket holders are Davidson County residents. On average, we sell another 1,800 tickets to folks in Davidson County. By expanding transit options, approximately 7,200 fans per game would have options other than automobiles to get to and from Bridgestone Arena. On the concert side of things, Bridgestone Arena was just ranked the fourth busiest concert arena in the United States and 12th busiest in the world with over 17, excuse me, 714,000 concert attendees last year, with more and more people coming through our gates every year, and we view having multiple options for fans to travel to 501 Broadway as only a good thing. The Nashville Predators support putting this bold transit initiative on the ballot as a way to give more options for our fans and staff to get to and from 501 Broadway and around Davidson County. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Dr. Judy Cummings. I live at 3073 Carrington Place, 37218 zip code. I'm a 39-year resident of District 1. I am also the senior pastor of New Covenant Christian Church in North Nashville. New Covenant Christian Church is an active member of the Transit Nashville Coalition, and I'm here tonight to respectfully ask the council to put the Let's Move Nashville Plan on the ballot in May for the voters to decide. I support transit and diverse mobility options because, as a public justice theologian, I believe transit is an important equity strategy. Lack of access to jobs and education due to inadequate and unreliable transportation is a barrier that has held back members of my congregation and members of the North Nashville community and other communities in Nashville from improving their quality of life. A comprehensive transit system is a game changer and will make more jobs, better-paying jobs, and more quality educational opportunities accessible to the people I serve. The Let's Move Nashville Plan promotes equity in a number of ways. Affordability is a crucial concern for many in our city, and transportation costs are a huge part of every- a huge part of every individual and family's budget. On average, in Nashville-Davidson County, 26% of a family's income is spent on housing. But did you know that nearly 22% of a family's income is spent on transportation costs? The average annual cost of owning a car in Nashville is $8,000. With the Let's Move Nashville Plan, families would have transportation options and could cut their family budget by thousands of dollars. Second, the Transit Improvement Plan proposing, is proposing to put $94.4 million toward improving the current bus system by increasing service hours to 20 hours a day, increasing frequency with buses and trains arriving every 15 minutes, and adding four new crosstown routes across the city. These changes, which can be made quickly after the Let's Move Nashville Plan is voted upon on May 1st, would allow people in my congregation and in the communities throughout Davidson County to travel to and from work, church, the doctor, and educational opportunities more affordably and reliably. Finally, the Transit Plan is proposing that access ride services will be increased. I respectfully ask the council to put the Let's Move Nashville Plan on the ballot in May to let our residents decide their transportation future. Thank you for all the work you do.
Good evening, council members. My name is Clifton Harris, and I live at 909 Sherwood Cove. And as President of the Urban League of Middle Tennessee, I support the mayor's transit plan because it means many of our citizens who need jobs or need access to jobs will have a safer, cheaper, and more reliable way to get to work. We need a system that allows people to move in and out of our city in more ways than just cars, and a transit system will keep the commute time reasonable and more productive. On average, it takes me an hour and a half to travel 18 miles just to get home. That's unproductive time that I cannot get back. It's time for us to prepare for the future. We have to invest in a transit system that relies on, that relieves traffic congestion, connects our neighborhoods, and increases access for all Nashvillians. The time has come for our great city of Nashville to have a transit system that makes simple-minded common sense. Please put this vote on the ballot for May 1st so that the citizens of Nashville can vote yea for transit for our great city. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Hoovler. I live at 1203 Stratford Avenue. I am here, this is probably one of the few cities this many people would stand in gridlock to talk about gridlock. I am one of the few people that actually complains about traffic, so you're welcome, Councilman Davis. I gave up my car about a year and a half ago, and it's one of the best decisions I've ever made. I save about, I save over $400 a month. I get exercise walking there. I love riding the bus. I don't lose any time. Now, the problem is, I can either walk .1 miles to my closest bus stop, which has a crosswalk half a mile either way, so if I use the crosswalk, I'm walking more than a mile, or I can walk to the closest one, which is .7, by using a crosswalk. When I first got rid of my car, I said, "I will never jaywalk across Gallatin. It is the Wild West. It's not something I do." My second day, I jaywalked across Gallatin because it's convenient and it's right there. I'm excited for improved transportation, more people to ride it, better pay system, more frequent rides, but I'm also mostly excited for the improved infrastructure that will come around it. Between my work downtown and my boyfriend's house at Fifth and Main, there's three intersections I'm pretty sure I'm going to get hit at, and I crossed four total. So I look forward to not only the changes that this plan is going to bring to the transportation, but also the infrastructure around it, supporting more biking, supporting more walking and doing it safely. Thank you very much for your support, and I hope to see this on the ballot on May 1st.
Good evening, council members. My name is Amr El Huseini. I'm the CEO of Lodestone Advisory Group in Nashville. I am here today to tell you that I believe the economic growth today is driven by cities and economic clusters around the world. I have, over the last 15 years, I have invested and worked in numerous highly-growing cities around the globe, and I've been involved in several initiatives that shape that transformation. At the core of all the successes I have seen, studied, or been involved in, there was always strong infrastructure programs that enabled the residents and the visitors alike to commute easily and be attracted to work and live in the place. If Nashville is to continue to excel and grow on a national and global scale and attract top talent, transportation, I think, is a crucial piece of that that we should not overlook. The plan we are voting on, whether perfect or not, is a stepping stone in the right direction. The alternative here is, I think, to sit and watch the world around us move on and leave us behind. I have seen cities of our size spend between $20 and $30 billion on improving their transit systems. We're in a global competition, and we're already late, so we don't think, I don't think we should wait any longer. I ask you to please vote to put the Transit Plan on the ballot and allow the voters to decide. Thank you.
My name is Brian Jones. I live at 1643 Patterson Street. I ask that in considering this transit bill, remember those without housing and ensure that those with housing do not lose theirs. It's very important in your civic duty that every individual that you all serve has the right safeguards in place when it is being built. Thank you for the mission.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kavara. I serve as Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer for Ingram Industries. We're located at 4400 Harding Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. The Ingram businesses employ over 2,000 associates who, with their families, reside in Metro Nashville and the surrounding areas. On behalf of our owners and our company, we support putting the Transit Plan on the ballot in May to let the voters decide. Many of the speakers have already pointed out the benefits of transit, and I will not repeat their comments tonight. We respectfully ask each of you to vote to put the Transit Improvement Plan on the ballot in May. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Cindy Wall. I live in District 25, represented by Russ Pulley, and I am here to speak on behalf of the Historic Belcourt Theater. But first, inspired by this very fine democratic process, and I mean that, I understand there's some people at the back of the line who are opposed to this. So what I would like to do is yield a little bit of my time to one of them to come forward, and then I'll come back, and while that other person who is opposed to speaking, I'll chop my remarks down to next to nothing in deference to people who are waiting behind me.
I'm here, I'm, we're not opposing it. Basically, what we're asking for is some community benefits. It's always about transit, transit, transit. We have a lot of people here that are homeless and a lot of people that have crappy jobs. Everything is going to go up, sales tax, I'm sorry, I blew up here, I can't even breathe. The taxes and stuff are going to go up, but, I mean, minimum wage has been the same forever, and everything else is going up. How can we afford to keep staying here? And no affordable housing is being built, or we need more affordable housing being built because we can't afford to live here. Only people can afford to live here is the people that's coming from out of town. Like, I've been trying to move for like six, seven months and finally moved, and I'm paying almost $1,400, but that's in hermitage. Like, y'all need to help us, the Nashvillians that are here. Minimum wage needs to go up. We need some affordable housing. And fix the bus services already here. Like, like they said, the Anyak Bus, it's crappy. Like, fix the stuff that's already done and then move on. We're not opposed to the stuff not being, you know, moving on, let's grow. Yeah, that's good. Everything is good, and we understand that, but it needs to be stuff that needs to be fixed. MTA, fix the buses that are here now. Hey, Steve Blain, how you doing back there?
All right. I'll make it quick. As I mentioned, I'm here representing the Belcourt Theater in historic, Historic Belcourt Theater in Hillsborough Village, also historic, and of course, wonderfully represented by Councilmember Berkeley Allen. At the Belcourt, our audiences come from throughout Middle Tennessee and beyond, but the vast majority of the 200,000 people who come to the movies every year at our theater and whom we reach through our mobile movie theater are Davidson County residents. For a cultural organization like the Belcourt that strives to make the power and wonder of great movies accessible to all, and for a city that rightly celebrates its creative community, finding and funding a transit solution that keeps artists and audiences moving, working, and engaging is critical. The recent Arts and Economic Prosperity National Impact Study found that Nashville's arts and culture industry generates nearly $430 million in annual economic activity. We are consistently in the top four arts and culture markets in the U.S. Imagine how much broader that impact would be if both our artists and our audiences throughout the city could easily navigate the city using an affordable, equitable, and accessible system. It is time to commit to transit and to let people vote on it. Our economic vitality depends on it, and indeed, our creative community needs it. Please put it on the ballot. Thank you.
My name's Kakki Comer, and I live at 553 Rosedale Avenue in District 17. I'm the Conservation Policy and Development Associate at Harpeth Conservancy, which is a nonprofit corporation. We represent 500 members in Nashville and 2,000 members throughout the state, but over 500,000 people visit the Harpeth River every year, and most of them are from Nashville. So Harpeth Conservancy wants to support putting the Transit Initiative on the ballot for two main reasons. Because responsible planned growth is essential to protect and improve water quality, and the effects of transit on land use and air quality, two things that are of tremendous importance around here are really a key sticking point. Secondly, we believe that such matters that are this important should be decided by the people who will be affected by them. On a personal note, I moved to Nashville as an Americor Vista volunteer, and I lived with a really modest living stipend below the poverty line. I would have greatly appreciated and benefited from a viable and reliable public transportation system to get to work, which wasn't there, and to get around the city. Unfortunately, I had to opt for keeping my car and spent a lot of my living stipend paying for gas and car repairs, which was a huge burden. So we, myself personally and our members, support putting the Transportation Initiative on the ballot in the spring. So thanks so much for the opportunity.
My name is Peg Kooning, and my address is 200 Walden Village Lane in Nashville, and I live next door, and I represent Tareka Nazarene University. And I thank Colby Sledge as our Councilman, who represents us so well. Tareka has really grown rapidly these past decade, and from its longtime Nashville Southside location, and today we have over 350 employees and 3,600 students, and the cost and time of commuting to our campus is becoming very significant. Before moving to Walden Village just a year ago, I commuted 26 miles one way to work from Wilson County. During that decade that I made the commute, it went from a fairly easy 30-minute commute to an average of 60 to 90 minutes one way. I spent thousands of dollars a year on gas and car maintenance like so many others, but most importantly, I lost two to three hours a day sitting on congested highways with my fellow Tareka community members. This is such a common experience for the majority of our employees, and many of our students who are now commuters. Tareka is actively working to find a way to ease some of these issues for our campus community. We've added MTA access for all students and employees for free. We cover the cost of any employee who can ride RTA and get to campus. We have worked with local real estate and management companies to create affordable housing close to campus and downtown, and it is available for anyone who would like to go, starting at $1,000 a month. We are more than ready for Nashville to make a significant investment in transit improvement. In the fall, our highest-attended Alumni Business Lunch was when we hosted Mayor Berry and Councilman Sledge for a discussion about the future of our neighborhood and transit. Our alumni and campus community want better options. Better transit would allow us to tell our freshmen to leave their cars at home and have better opportunities to ease their stress. Councilman, we support this transit vote for the people of Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Lee. On behalf of Change Healthcare, I head up Executive Recruitment. We're located at 3055 Lebanon Pike in Nashville. Good evening. And let me first extend my appreciation to the bench of council for your time and leadership regarding this important initiative, Let's Move Nashville, and your decision to include it on the ballot in May. Change Healthcare has a workforce in and around Davidson County of more than 1,000. For my colleagues and me at Change Healthcare, transit is about more than getting from point A to point B. Transit influences businesses, recruiting, convenience for our company, and safety for both our residents and our visitors. Change Healthcare strongly supports actions that influence transit in a positive way so that transit may influence our community in a positive way. With a million more people expected to call Middle Tennessee their home by 2040, just 22 years from now, up from about 2 million today. By the way, sometimes I look up a year a movie came out to put the passage of time in perspective. So in thinking about 22 years, I first Googled Top Gun, 1986. Yep, 32 years ago. I decided to stick with Tom Cruise, and my next search was a hit, Jerry Maguire, 1996. Again, 22 years. So 22 years, a million people, just like that, it will come as it did yesterday with Jerry Maguire. Show me the money. That's right. Show me the money, or you had me at hello. Seems like only yesterday. One thing is abundantly clear: A delay in action would directly reduce the intended positive influences of Let's Move Nashville, and inaction would reverse the influence of transit for Middle Tennessee from positive to negative. We hope that the future of transit in Nashville will provide diverse, modern transportation options: increased routes for the existing bus system, light rail for outlined areas, and direct shots to the airport and other key attractions in the city. We'd like to see the influence of transit for Middle Tennessee be positive and not negative for our community. Change Healthcare supports putting Let's Move Nashville on the ballot in May for the voters to decide. Thank you again for your time and leadership.
Good evening. My name is Alex Curtis, and I live at 3818 Abbott Martin Road in Nashville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Let's Move Nashville Plan and adding it to the ballot for a public vote in May. I head up Public Affairs for the Nashville Technology Council, which represents almost 400 tech companies, IT departments, association, associated organizations, and educational institutions in this region. Our members realize that public transit is key, it's a key ingredient for a region's prosperity. The Let's Move Nashville Plan means that the future tech worker, whether she's a student or someone who's changing careers, will have improved access to tech education and to her eventual employer. The plan also puts our local businesses on equal footing to compete with the same talented people as businesses in other cities with established transit systems. As a voice of the tech community, of course, new innovations like autonomous vehicles and buses and ride sharing will play a role to improve our transit system. But there is no such thing as a technological silver bullet that solves Nashville's transit problem, and I would encourage you to be weary of those who present one. Instead, as a plan, as the plan anticipates, it's going to take a combination of many solutions. For our part, the NTC will promote new innovations, as well as help to coordinate our members with solutions, including staggered worktimes to help even out rush hours, and signing up employees for publicly available transit programs and incentives. We thank the community leaders for all the work that's been done to get us to this point, and I respectfully ask the council, please vote to put the Let's Move Nashville Plan on the ballot in May. Thank you.
My name is Andres Martinez, and I live at 502 Russell Street. I am Director of Communications at Conexión Americas, located at Casa Asafrán on Nolan Zil Pike. At Conexión Americas, we believe that our city's success depends on all families' ability to belong to belong, contribute, and succeed in our community. We share a vision of an equitable and inclusive city where everyone, no matter where they come from or where they live, has access to good jobs, educational opportunities, needed services, and places to play, socialize, and participate. An accessible and dependable transit system is key to that connectivity. Too often, families in our community confront the barriers imposed by Nashville's current limited transit system, whether it's gridlock, infrequent bus service, or no nearby bus stops, lack of sidewalks, or bike lanes. Immigrant families, like all Nashvillians, need varied, dependable options to get to work, school, the grocery store, a doctor's appointment, a park, and all that our city has to offer. Conexión Americas supports putting transit on the ballot May 1st, and the plan to make our city more inclusive and accessible for all its residents. Thank you.
Good evening, Metro Council members. My name is Carla Coleman Garcia, and I live in District 7. I'm the Policy Manager at Conexión Americas, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our education policy programs. Through our education work, we help immigrant families understand the U.S. school system, and we help first-generation college-bound students apply to college. Even though we've run some of these programs for over a decade, every year, every semester, and at every school, we always have the same problem for retention of our participants, and that is lack of access to transportation. When families don't have options for transportation, we limit their abilities to be an active part of their children's education. Transportation also impacts children's ability to be able to access after-school programs or enrichment activities that can help encourage them to pursue education and higher education. For those that are in higher education, for our college students, having access to mass transit can help reduce out-of-pocket expenses for them, and broaden access to post-secondary for those students that may not have transportation, and therefore may not be able to get to college classes. Transit has the power to open and expand opportunities for students and for their families. We ask that as you consider the positive impacts of transportation, you also consider how this impacts education. It is for this reason that we ask you to put transit on the ballot and let educators, students, and their families vote on this issue. Thank you.
I'm Howard Allen, and my mailing address is 705 Drexel. I can't tell you where I live because I stay in an encampment, and if I let you know, it might be destroyed, because I can't get housing, not affordable housing, but low-income housing, because it's a big difference. But I, one of the greatest things I can say is I'm a Nashvillian, I was born and bred here, and I wanted to let you know that it's been some great words spoken, but a lot of misspoke words here. We're not pro-transit, I'm not pro-transit, I just want to make, have a safety net for my brothers and sisters that are in low-income areas, that are in poverty, because I'm below that. I'm trying to get in that, and I want to stop the displacement and gentrification. And if you look in Oakland, California right now, they're doing, right now, what our mayor is trying to do, and you'll see displacement and gentrification. I also want to let you know that they're not developing where I'm camping right now, but when it gets ready to be started, they're building affordable housing for me, and it's across the street, and it's called a jail. So I want you to know that we got to fix this. There's a great commercial on TV right now that says, "The season's end," but it says, "Don't you forget about me. Don't forget about my brothers and sisters." I want the old Nashville to be able to coexist with the new Nashville. You know, this is a millennium city, this is a tourist city, and it's a police city, and we got to change that. We got to make it right. This is the it city, but greatness only comes around once, and you have the power to make it great. And let me tell you something else. I will be considered chronically homeless. I have a bus card that lasted me for two and a half years, but I'm your brother, whether you want to face that or not. You're my sister. I have a cousin named Berkeley Allen over there, sitting. But I just want to let you know, it's a we thing, and we have to make it right, and when we write the check, I want to make sure we have community benefits for all communities. Thank you.
My name is Robert Hicks. I'm from Antioch, Tennessee. I'm a union worker. Union jobs for the transit, if it passes, African-Americans and other renorers need to be included in the jobs. Thank you.
I am Ashley Northington. My small business is located along a high-capacity transit corridor at 625 Main Street in East Nashville. The zip code is 37206. I am a native Nashvillian and the founding director at Denora Brands and Public Relations. I've had the distinct pleasure of serving on the, as the team lead for the Small Business Subcommittee for the Mayor's Task Force on Transit and Affordability. I am in support of the Let's Move Nashville Transit Plan, and I ask you to consider letting the people vote on transit for two primary reasons. First, the Transit Plan will allow more people to move in and about Nashville more freely and efficiently, while simultaneously creating more jobs, about 45,000 new jobs during construction and after, with maintenance and operation. These positions will be well-paying jobs that will help generate wealth in our community so that more Nashvillians have a chance to thrive within the community they love. Second, the Transit Plan affords Nashville a unique opportunity to ensure the equitable distribution of public contracts for those small businesses who wish to do work for the city. As council members and the public will no doubt see in the next coming days, our Task Force recommendations will ask the city to be thoughtful and innovative as it relates to how it engages and supports small businesses and many other organizations. In closing, I am asking you all to let the people vote on transit. Please, people, please put the Let's Move Nashville Plan on the ballot in May to let the voters decide how we move forward.
Thank you all for listening to us tonight. Thank you, Councilman Freddie O'Connell, for your continued leadership for our district. I am Ashley Seegroves. I've been a resident, property owner in Davidson County, and registered voter for 17 years. My downtown photography studio and art gallery is one block away from here at 208 Third Avenue North, and I serve clients from all over the region. Moving from Atlanta, I'm all too familiar with rapid growth, overwhelming transit and unplanned, overwhelming traffic and unplanned transit. In the past 13 years of being downtown, I've had more complaints and lost clients due to the difficulties of traffic and high-rising costs of parking. My team has been forced to move from parking lots due to high demand from hotels and increased monthly parking rates. Transit will help ease this burden. I've been asking clients and friends how they see transit affecting them. For those who don't see it, to see that it will have an impact on them, I've encouraged them to think broader, because it will affect everyone. I'm fortunate to work, live, and play downtown, yet I've not been a transit user. I'd encourage those who may not use transit to support the transit referendum, as well as use it themselves. Now that I'm a user, I see it as an awesome way to see our city through a different lens. For example, I rode the bus from downtown to the Belcourt Theater for a movie, and was thrilled by the way I experienced the city. I noticed businesses, murals, buildings, things I'd never seen before because I was always busy driving. I didn't have any worries about other cars or pay attention to the lights or traffic. I felt completely safe the entire time, and I was able to just enjoy the ride. We finished up with the shopping and spending money, and then we picked up a baguette and went home for dinner. I know that sounds kind of simple, but there are a lot of people that don't realize the value of transit. It's not just for commuting, it's for everyday life and exploring our city together. I would really love and encourage each of you to vote for this and add this to the ballot so that we, as a city and community, can vote. Thank you so much.
Good evening. In the interest of time, I'll keep my comments brief. My name is Isaac Adai. I reside at 1515 Fifth Avenue North in Germantown, Nashville, represented by Councilman Freddie O'Connell. I'm an Assistant Professor in the College of Business at TSU, and I represent Conscious Conversation, which is a part of the Transit Coalition. I'm very supportive of the mayor's proposal. As a community, as a city, we need effective transit solutions. Having moved here from the Washington, DC area, I can personally attest to how effective transit impacts quality of life in a positive way. However, I want to advocate for communities of color having their voices being heard in dialogue that relates to moving plans forward. They may have impact in that community. In Conscious Conversation, we do exactly that. We try to ensure that communities of color are represented, have opportunities to hear what's going on and what's going to impact them, and I just want to see that also happen with this particular proposal. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rhodes, 214 Ocean Side Drive. Yes, Ocean Side Drive, that's in District 17. I've lived in, worked in, or commuted into and out of this community since 2004, roughly 14 years. My profession is that of a traffic engineer. Therefore, I've seen traffic congestion on our streets, on our highways, and on our interstates, and I've also seen that congestion continue to incrementally grow at a rate that outpaces many of our peer cities. I firmly believe that we cannot build our way out of this congestion simply by building more roads or widening our current roads. This is singular-focused, and it continues to promote the single-occupant vehicle. One person in one car is inefficient, and it won't help the congestion problem that we have here in Nashville. To solve our congestion problem, I firmly believe we need viable, multimodal choices, and transit is a proven multimodal option that has helped other cities similar to ours improve their mobility woes. Transit can serve our citizens, our visitors, our tourists, and many of those others that commute into and out of the county on an everyday basis. And the beauty of transit service is that it's affordable for all of our demographics. I know we've got many people here that'd like to speak tonight. In summary, I strongly urge this governing body to allow transit funding to be a ballot measure in May, so that Davidson Countians can choose for themselves if they'd like to devote dedicated funding to help us improve Middle Tennessee congestion. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is JP Cowan. I live at 1107B Boscoble Street in District 6. I'd like to thank Brett for his service to our district and all of you for your service to Nashville. I'm here in support of putting transit on the ballot for voters to decide. I'm an Associate Principal with TMP Partners in Architecture and Interior Design Practice in Brentwood. As architects, we understand the value of transit. It connects people to place, to homes, to entertainment, to jobs. It does it efficiently, economically, and sustainably, reducing carbon footprint and congestion, while saving households money and enhancing individuals' personal opportunities. At TMP, we are in support of transit. While our office is located in Williamson County, most of our folks commute in from the surrounding counties. I know today we're talking about Davidson County, but what we decide to do today will affect our entire Middle Tennessee region, and we must be leaders for the region. I'd like to share a personal experience with transit. After graduating college, I was lucky enough to live and work in Honolulu, Hawaii. Honolulu is and was one of the most expensive cities to live in the U.S. As a recent college graduate, I had no money and a modest income, and my housing cost was nearly half of my monthly income. However, I was able to have a great quality of life, in part due to the fact that I did not need a car, and I didn't even own a car while living there most of the time. I had the availability of a great transit system on the island. Transit is essential for us to continue to realize economic development and maintain quality of life for our city. I urge all of you to put transit on the ballot, and to give the voters of Davidson County the opportunity to have their say. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, distinguished council members. My name is Joette Heisterkamp, and I reside at 4825 Humbird Drive in South Nashville. When I moved to this great city back in 2001 from Minneapolis, it was not common at all to move down here. I had to explain that I was not moving down here to become the next big country star, and I also had to promise a dear, dear friend that I would never, ever become a redneck. I had to remain Joette. I, throughout my time here in Nashville, and all of us have seen that Nashville has now become an it city, but our transit system is not at an it city level. I am an everyday woman that uses the transit system seven days a week to get to and from work, to the grocery store, to meet friends for dinner, and really to use it constantly. But my main concern is that in my job experiences in retail and customer service, a lot of times I've had this struggle of how am I going to get home at 11:00 PM at night? Or maybe I have a job working at 2:00 AM. Can I catch a ride with a coworker? Is it going to be a very long walk home? Am I going to be safe during that long walk home? I've also worked at different establishments right here downtown in Broadway, and that too is a constant struggle. How do you get home when you do not work a common schedule? So I strongly urge you to add this measure to the ballot on May 1st, because really, you need to make sure that you are listening to the voices of the everyday workers of Nashville, because we do need this transit system, so that we can stay employed, so that we can apply for the better-paying jobs, so that we can better ourselves, and that Nashville can continue to become the it city that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I hope, I hope you'll let your friend know that we rednecks aren't that bad after all.
Hello, council members. Thank you for sticking with us. We have a lot more residents here to talk, and I want to thank you all for spending the time to hear us out. My name is Craig Holcomb. I live in Councilmember Withers District. I am a native Nashvillian, born and raised here, one of the few unicorns, as we're referred to. I could talk about the economic benefits, I could talk about the personal economic benefits of the fact that I've had to change the tires on my car four times in the last three years because of our roads and lack of transit. But really, what I wanted to talk about today was, several years back, I had the great opportunity working at the state legislature, and I found very quickly that the thing that filled my soul were something that you all know very well. It's called constituent services. When I received calls about dogs in the yard, or problems in the neighborhood, I could help. When I received calls from the elderly, the indigent, trying to get access rides that don't access their road, people calling saying, "If I don't make this doctor's appointment, I can't get my blood thinners for the next six months." There are people hurting in this city that don't have access to the things they need to, the hospitals, the doctor's offices, the jobs. If you are relegated to the one mile around your home, that's all you got. There's no interaction with the city, there's no cohesiveness, there's no value added to your life because you don't have one. Your freedom of movement is restricted. We, as a city, are really the shining point in our state. We have the opportunity to create a Middle Tennessee Transit Plan that not only benefits Nashville, but all the adjacent counties, all the adjacent people, bringing in jobs, bringing in new residents, and allowing these people to live fulfilled, healthy, active lives. That's all I have to say. Let's put Let's Move on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ethan Link, and I live on North Sixth Street in District 5, Cleveland Park. Thank you all for sticking with us and your time. I'm here to speak for the more than 1,000 laborers and Lyuna Union members here in Davidson County that are really depending on this transit program and transit improvement to come through for them. We have hundreds of members who are members of Lyuna at Vanderbilt University, who do, you know, the dining services, the custodians, the folks that do the maintenance work, and a lot of them, who, some of whom were able to come tonight but could not stay because of their shift, they depend on public transit, not just to get to and from work, but for everything their family does. In a lot of cases, that means two hours at the beginning of every day, two-plus hours at the end of every day to arrange childcare and their extracurriculars, and get to work and back, all on the bus system. And so, this issue is about affordability for them, it's about giving them better opportunities and better choices, but it's not just dollars and cents, it's about the priceless time that they miss out with their family by struggling with this daily rat race. And so, it's very important to us, very important to our members at Vanderbilt, who we talk to every day, that this passes. But also, we have hundreds of construction members here in Davidson County, local workers who are training and getting ready for the jobs of the future, many of which are in infrastructure construction. And I just wanted to say briefly about that, when we talk about there being hundreds of jobs, this isn't hundreds of jobs that are more of the same. These are hundreds of high-skilled construction jobs doing infrastructure- These are hundreds of high-skilled construction jobs doing infrastructure work that is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Cities that I've seen, like Miami, like Denver, Washington DC, where large-scale transit upgrades happen, the kind of training and skills that are required for that work changes lives. Because they're 10-year projects, that means that people can have almost an entire career building one of these transit systems. And so, don't let the critics who talk about the cost scare you because $9 billion is $9 billion of wages.
Hello. How y'all doing today? My name is Mark Townsend. I stay in 510 Heritage Drive in Madison, Tennessee. Recently, I just moved to Nashville. I'm with the Labor Union Group, Launa, and I represent not only myself but a class or a core group of young individuals. I'm 27 years young. And right now, I just became certified in my OSHA-30s in safety and health. And there's a lot of pivotal points on why should we go for the transit, but more so because it will bring in different revenues, different type of jobs, not only for the older class, but for the young children as well, for the highly skilled, just bringing in a certain group or a certain vibe and atmosphere around the city that this is something serious. It can change, it can grow into more of a Mecca point for Nashville, Tennessee, as it scans across the South. One thing in the world that's inevitable is change. So why stay complacent? And another reason for, it's piggyback off all the individuals here. You've got health, you've got jobs, you've got transportation, you've got safety. A lot of casualties, a lot of events happen on the roads here in Nashville, Tennessee. The snow comes in, shuts down the whole city. Car accident, highways blocked off for hours. Why not have a transit where we can get to not only our house but the grocery store or I've got a cut or a broken bone to get to somewhere that we will be helped accordingly? Sorry. But more so just, why not push the transit? Not just for young people, but for people that have been here as well and that has had their share of living in Nashville. Once again, it's a growing city. One of the top growing cities in the nation as we stand here and talk today, not only for young kids growing up, but for hard-working individuals here in the city. So I just, you know, just hope you put on the ballot and push it forward. Thank you for listening to me as well.
Hi, my name is Tamika Douglas and I live in Madison, Bill Proddmore's district. Hi, Bill, how are you? Most of the speakers you've heard tonight are people from Chamber of Converse, Sierra Club, people that I don't see on the bus. I ride the bus to work, but I don't see people like that on the bus. You know who I see on the bus? I see poor people. I see people of color on the bus. I see veterans. I see disabled. I see the elderly on the bus. I don't see most of these type of people on the bus. You know that? Because they don't ride the bus. And most of them probably have never ridden on a bus a day of their privileged lives because that's not what they do. But anyway, let's just talk about some of the issues here. 10% of the $9 billion of this transit plan will go to buses. That's such a small amount. We need improvements in the bus system now. We can't wait for light rail. We need more routes, we need longer services. Not everybody works day shift. We need time for second shift workers, third shift workers, and we need maintenance of the existing bus system. I've been on a bus that has broken down and it's not fun at all. A third of this plan depends on money from the Federal Transportation Agency. The FTA doesn't even have this Nashville Transit Plan in their budget, per the Tennessean's article last Friday. So if the money doesn't come from the federal government, guess who it's going to come from? "It" city. It's going to come from you, us, taxpayers. And our taxes may go up to 10.5%, which will be the highest in the country. So, we actually really do have transit. It's called the gentrification train and it's already here. We have lost churches, neighborhoods, communities to overdevelopment and displacement of people. We need to help working-class families. We need housing, access to equitable housing. It is our duty to protect the poor, the elderly, the homeless, and the disabled. Let's put that $9 billion to work for the people that need it. It will be immoral if we neglect the needs of the people in the community and their blood will be on our hands.
Hello, my name is Angelique Johnson and I'm in District 1. I'm here because I ride the bus every day, going to work, take the kids to school, and on my everyday needs. And it's very hard to ride the buses when a lot of places that I need to go to, the buses don't even touch. Or the time limit is just not, it don't match up. And I'm always on the bus hours out of my day because it takes two hours, three hours to get just across town and it's just not fair. So, I just know we need a lot more bus services, improving for the times. 24-hour bus services will help a lot and a lot more, we need housing, we need lot housing. And if we do have light rail come down here, we need to make sure that it's jobs that's affordable, I mean, $15 an hour or more where people can live off living wage jobs. Because it's hard to live in Nashville when you don't make enough to live here and it's like, who wants to be in the "it" city when everybody's been pushed away? So, we want to be in Nashville. We want to be part of this growing city. So, we just ask for community benefits for all Nashvillians.
John Vanderhuis, 1407 Roberts Avenue, 37206. Greetings to a barely quorum Metro Council from a packed-out gallery. 30 years, and I have never owned a car. I'm 62 years old. I've never taken a taxi or a ride share. I've depended on mass transit systems and a dozen different systems. So I have a little bit of experience at this. I just looked up an op-ed piece I wrote for the Tennessean 30 years ago on this topic. The two changes since then, everything unfortunately is still good in this article except for two things. We're no longer, we no longer have a small-city feel. And I can tell you from my experience with council, we would've never had a gallery this packed out on this topic at that time. So I think I've done a pretty good job working with others to build interest in mass transit. That time, I also embarked, though, on solid waste. And there are parallels between these two issues. And the problem is, this plan is obligating us to do some really bad things, okay? That needs to be fixed before it goes to any ballot. If you just send this to the ballot, especially if it loses, you just waste a bunch of our time. I don't want to see that. So fix the problems in it. So, when Metro 28 years ago embarked on a bad recycling plan, I was one that stood up against it saying, "This is just going to increase landfilling." You can see from the stat sheets I give you every year how that has happened. Okay, this transit system, if passed as it is, will turn us into another Atlanta and it will actually increase traffic congestion. Think about that. It will increase traffic congestion while we sock ourselves in the pocketbook and take money from other issues to pour it into these consultants that have these boondoggles that keep coming along. I visited Atlanta back 29 years ago. I saw, no, it was longer than that, 30, well, we don't want to become like Atlanta. Trains and buses galore. It doesn't solve the problem without doing urban density first.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jane Steinfeld Hussein. I live at 2115 Pontotalk in East Nashville in Brett Withers District. I want to thank Vice Mayor and the council for this wonderful exercise in democracy. I'm a retired special ed preschool teacher. I'm a relative newcomer to Nashville. I moved here only 26 years ago. And I moved here from New York. And I found, of course, I compared the cities. I found that compared to New York City, of course, public transportation was abysmal. Of course, wages were much lower. Surprisingly, the prices of food and basic necessities were higher because of our crazy sales tax. The one good thing was that rent was much lower. 26 years later, I find that public transportation, which I still use, most of my working life, I've depended on public transportation, public transportation has gotten incrementally better. The gap between the wages of low-income people like myself and high-income people has grown, with the same gap as growing in the United States, but I think Nashville is worse. The low-income people have been left behind. The difference is that, I mean amazingly, our Republican governor was for decreasing our food tax, but now this plan is for increasing it again. And then, the big difference, of course, is that rent is now comparable to places like New York City. So, I'm talking about the quality of life. I am a strong supporter of public transportation. I am a strong opponent of this referendum being offered to the people of Nashville. You don't have to ask the people of Nashville if we want less traffic and better transportation. Of course we do. What we don't want is to be locked into a $9 billion package deal. That the devil is in the details and the devil is in the context. One of the details is this food tax. The context is the priorities in Nashville for housing, for better employment, for the health of our people, for the quality of life. Thank you.
My name is Emily Quinlan. I live at 3822 Lookout Drive. I'm with the Land Trust for Tennessee. I'm the Conservation Project Manager for Middle Tennessee. The Land Trust is a non-governmental, nonprofit conservation organization. We've conserved over 120,000 acres across the state and over 40 properties in Davidson County. I'm here today because a comprehensive transit plan means transportation corridors, which means dense development along those corridors, which means less sprawl and more opportunity for swaths of dedicated, conserved, open space between those corridors. Our quality of life and the character of our county depend, first, on Davidson County residents voting on transit. They depend, second, on all of us here today working together on a plan that benefits all of our current and future residents. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Batros and I'm a sophomore at McGavick High School. And transit for me has been very simple. It has been, if I ever had to stay after school, I can call my mom and she can come get me in 30 minutes. Or I can take the bus and I can go home. But every time I go out of those front doors of my school, I see students who stay after school for athletics, or band, or choir, or any other extracurricular activity. And they have to stay after school for longer than I do, many for three hours or longer. And there are people, worse even, who've tried to reach and have opportunities and stay and try to try out for sports, but will not because they know that if they stay, they will not have any way back home. So I urge you to add the transit plan into the ballot and let the people vote for a better and sufficient transit plan for Nashville. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Alexander. I live at 3822 Lookout Drive here in Nashville. And I'm also the Outreach Coordinator at Greenways for Nashville. We are a nonprofit organization whose mission is to create, preserve, and promote greenways across the city. We represent thousands of members, volunteers, and greenway users in the county, and we support allowing Nashvillians to vote on a referendum for transit. In 2017, Metro released Plan to Play, the 10-year master plan for Metro Parks and Greenways. The plan includes approximately 20 miles of new greenways in the downtown and midtown area and will connect neighborhoods, businesses, schools, and parks by greenways in our urban core. If Nashville can couple Plan to Play with a comprehensive transit plan, Nashvillians will have the option to use transit in conjunction with, to use greenways in conjunction with the transit system like never before. And according to a poll done last year by Metro Parks, almost 2/3 of Nashvillians would be more likely to use greenways to commute if more of them were connected to transit stops. The downtown and midtown greenway loops laid out in Plan to Play are underway and will connect Nashvillians to active transportation options. But we need a comprehensive transit plan to make them accessible to all Nashvillians. We have a vision of a Nashville that not only has an extensive urban greenway system, but a greenway system that is accessible by transit, giving all Nashvillians the option to use them for recreation and a realistic, healthy, and affordable alternative to cars and gridlock. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Noah Van Mielo. I'm a student at Vanderbilt University in District 18. I think I speak for most Vanderbilt students when I say that we love having Nashville as our home. But if you don't have a car here, your travel radius is very limited. The current public transport system is not enough. This transit plan would make exploring the city affordable and efficient, whether that's for fun, or for jobs, or for internship opportunities for students. Personally, having lived in London, England, I've seen what good transit can do. Before I came to Nashville, I did not know how to drive. And I was made fun of it, I made fun of it by my peers, but I didn't need to know how to drive. Better transit means I don't need to worry about buying a car, or paying for car insurance, or paying for gas. Better transit means that instead, I can spend my time and money on bettering my future. Thank you for your consideration and please let students like me vote for better transit on May 1st. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Toni from the Edgehill Community, represented by Councilman Sledge. Aside from wearing the wrong hat for the good state of Tennessee, I beg your indulgence. I am a long-term transplant from Birmingham, Alabama. And I ran around for years saying, "Oh, I love Nashville. It is so progressive." That is until a week ago, you know, I received notice that my rent is being increased $300 a month and that I am about to become collateral damage of that progression. So I'm here with a group called PATH, People's Alliance for Housing, Transit, and Employment. And along with moving Nashville, I implore you to make that movement with inclusion. The inclusion of affordable housing, the inclusion of living wage jobs, and, you know, non-displacement of native Nashvillians. Along with that movement, you know, include the local contractors and small business owners. So, we are here seeking inclusion and that you not forget the native Nashvillians and the least among us.
My name is Ashley Batchelder. I live in East Nashville in District 6 and I am one of the 100 new people that are moving to Nashville every day. I moved here about a year ago. However, my in-laws have lived here for 30 years and I've been visiting for six years. One of the things that I noticed when I moved here, which is different from just being a visitor, is how unequal this city is. I think it's clear to probably everyone in this room that we're a city of have and have-nots. And when I think about this transit plan, I don't disagree that we need transit solutions. However, I wish it was something that I felt more comfortable voting on. Like I said, I live in East Nashville. I live about a mile away from Gallatin, where the first light rail would go in. And I'm concerned about the unintended impacts that this plan might have on the neighborhoods that are surrounding, really, all the neighborhoods in Nashville. We look at other cities that go through this kind of growth and have this kind of development and we see skyrocketing rents, just increased housing, the, you know, profit-driven development who really benefits from it. I hope to buy a home in Nashville in the next year, hopefully, and I'm concerned that I won't be able to afford to do so where I want to live. And that's being in a two-income household where I know my income is well above the median. So I know if I'm worried about these things, how are the rest of my brothers and sisters in the city going to do so? I work with a network of free and charitable clinics in Nashville and those are the people that I think about every day when I think about unintended consequences. We all know that budgets are moral documents and when I look at the costs that's going to be spent on this plan and I see all the other social problems that are in Nashville, I just question the priorities of our decision-makers and how we're going to meet those I just question the priorities of our decision-makers and how we're going to meet those other needs. I think that there is a solution that we can add to this plan to make us more comfortable voting for this, and that is ensuring community benefits that are legally binding. We can't just assume that people will get what they need, whether that's affordable housing, good-paying jobs, more bus services. We need these things that are legally binding so that we feel comfortable voting in May. Thank you.
My name is Eric Hoke. I live in, on 302 Manchester Avenue in District 6, in Brett Withers' district. I'm here on behalf of the Nashville Civic Design Center's Young Urbanists Group. We're comprised of young, or young at heart, professionals who advocate and promote quality of life in Nashville's urban environments. Naturally, we're pro-transit and support the proposed plan. Our contingent is represented by a diverse population that uses a variety of transportation options. Young urbanists often choose to ride transit even when they have access to private vehicles because of the many benefits it has. As a city, we have a chance to critically think about how we design major arterial roads for people, not just for private vehicles. This is an amazing opportunity that we have to concentrate density along our pikes and proceed with smart, transit-oriented development options. This plan is necessary to be deliberate about our growth and shape, and shape our city. We hope that you'll allow us to vote on this transit plan.
Good evening. My name is Ron Yearwood. I'm a resident of District 7, 2330 Riverside Drive, 37216. I'm the current Board President of the local nonprofit Transit Now Nashville, and we are in full support of putting transit on the ballot. Transit Now is a grassroots organization whose mission is to engage the Nashville community to promote a vibrant transit system. We help educate people about our existing system, how to take advantage of recent improvements, and continue to advocate for increasing frequencies, ease of access, and expanding our rapid transit options. With nearly 2,000 fellow Nashvillians engaged in our network, we are all excited to see this plan address immediate improvements to our bus network, accommodating commuters throughout the day and night, as well as investing in longer-term rapid transit projects. This is the next step for Nashville, and it is our hope that the Metro Council allows the citizens of Davidson County the opportunity to choose to invest in our mobility options and create better transit now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Passanow. I live at 518 South 15th in District 6, but was born and raised in District 18, where, just to share a little bit about myself, one of the marquee moments of my youth was getting my MTA bus card. It meant freedom, and I still think about that. I now work at the Southern Environmental Law Center. It's a nonprofit dedicated to protecting natural resources and communities across the Southeast. In part, that means advocating for clean air, smarter growth, and sustainable transportation options, and our Tennessee office is here in Nashville. And so, here, we've participated in some of the visioning efforts over the years, whether that's Nashville Next or In Motion, and it's in those plans, along with the parks, greenways, and sidewalks plans you've heard about, of course, that Nashvillians said, "We want a place where we can meaningfully interact with one another. We're tired of sort of making eyes across traffic jams and spinning large chunks just circling, looking for parking spots." But those of us who've lived here for a long time, I think, have also seen what displacement and sprawl look like, and whether that's interstates decimating economic corridors, vibrant neighborhoods sort of ripped up under the guise of urban renewal, to two-plus-hour commutes and more. But I do think we've come a long way, and I believe that we can and will work together to create a vision of a more equitable transportation system, which is why we're asking you to give voters the chance to approve the funding, to make the kinds of balanced transportation plans that they've already endorsed a reality. After all, investing in transit is investing in quality of life, and it's well-designed transit, though, that offers critical links between jobs, affordable housing, and has the co-benefits that we do care about in terms of countering the pressure to grow by sprawl, and in terms of producing orders of magnitude less air pollution per passenger, which does particularly matter in Nashville, where we have trouble already meeting health standards for ozone pollution and have asthma rates higher than the state average. So, whether it's the short-term health impacts or the long-term climate impacts, we've got to change, and so the transit plan is a critical tool. Please give Nashvillians a chance to build a stronger, cleaner, healthier Nashville. Thank you.
My name is Shawna Huey, and I live in Councilwoman Allen's district. I run Think Tennessee, which is a nonpartisan think tank dedicated to developing and promoting ideas that move our state forward. I'd like to give you a quick preview of a study that we'll release next week. As Nashville looks to decide its transit future, many in our city and on this council may ask, "Who needs public transit?" Our study will show, perhaps unsurprisingly, that a wide range of Nashvillians stand to benefit from improved transit access. What's more surprising is how many of these transit disadvantaged Nashvillians live in our city and in each council district, and how much inadequate transit access correlates with poor quality of life. Let's take senior citizens. Seniors without transit access make 15%, 15% fewer doctor's visits and 65% fewer trips for social, family, and religious activities. Yet compared with similarly sized areas, seniors in the Nashville metro area experience the fourth lowest transit access in the nation. A whopping 85% of Nashville-area seniors have poor transit access. How about residents with a disability? Lack of transportation access is more prevalent among individuals with disabilities and more likely to leave them stuck at home. More than 82,000 Nashville residents, that's 12.2%, have a disability. In some council districts, this rate rises to 1 in 5. Many individuals with disabilities rely on family members for help getting them where they need to go. 22% of households in Nashville, that's nearly 60,000 in all, are home to a person with a disability. Our study will also underscore Nashville's high rate of single parents, nearly 83% in some parts of the city, and of residents who lack regular vehicle access, more than 1 in 4 residents in our urban core. To both populations, access to transit could be life-changing. We look forward to sharing the full study with the council and the public next week. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Emery Hartz. I live at 3831 Weston Avenue in District 24. I actually grew up in Clarksville, and 10 years ago, I moved here to work for WSP. And when I moved here, even then, I found it difficult to get in and out of downtown, which prompted me to take my first bus trip eight years ago, and that includes a school bus. So, since then, I've become a transit advocate. I've really enjoyed using the existing bus system. It's given me independence without needing my car at every moment. I've been able to save money, extend the life of my vehicle. I don't need to pay to park at work. I don't need to pay to park downtown, and I honestly don't use ride-sharing quite as often unless it's in conjunction with transit. So, with that said, I want to thank the council for approving dedicated funding for previous existing transit system and sidewalks, because I've really seen the improvements, but we need to take a step further. We need to do more. I'm still having a hard time. I have to pre-plan my commute at least a day in advance, just so I can efficiently get around during work hours. And in addition to that, I'm looking to buy a home, and I want to buy a home on a transit corridor. And as we all know, not all neighborhoods are connected to transit just yet. That is why we need to put transit on the ballot, so every Nashvillian can enjoy commuting as I do. Thanks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause this just for a second and announce that we have exceeded the time of the short, most recent short-term rental public hearing. Congratulations. Go ahead.
Well, very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. I hope this has been somewhat less acrimonious than some of the STR hearings, at the very least. But my name's Scott Dietz. I live at 1611 Long Avenue in Councilman Withers' district, and I'm a lifelong Nashvillian, so I have seen the way that traffic and transportation issues have gotten more difficult over the years. You know, as we're thinking that a lot of these benefits, the vision of this transit plan is sort of in the future, I kind of like to imagine if we had been acting on these issues 10, 15, 20 years ago, had we been able to foresee this rapid growth, and we're already at the point where we had transit corridors throughout our city, where we had trains, light rail, and bus rapid transit already with dedicated right-of-way to bypass the traffic that is slowing our commutes and impacting our quality of life. If we had crosstown bus routes that are being proposed and extended bus hours that we would be enjoying, and thinking about how to expand that into even more neighborhoods. You know, I look at this, and I share a lot of the concerns that have been addressed by some of my neighbors here tonight regarding community benefits, but that's one of the reasons why I'm supporting this transit initiative. In my view, the transit plan is a community benefit. These are public goods. The transit plan is an affordability plan. We're reducing costs due to car ownership. We're allowing for increased density along transit-oriented districts, which is a housing plan. That's not to say that this will be the silver bullet, but it's going to help us along those, along with those issues, as I know that we're all dedicated to helping everyone in our city. So, a saying that I've heard in the past is that, you know, "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, and the second-best time is today." Well, you know, we didn't get it 20 years ago, so let's plant that seed today, so that 20 years from now, we will be enjoying the transit system that the city needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, honorable Metro Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm a proud resident of District 6, represented by Councilmember Withers. My name's Lisa Howe, and I'm the CEO of the Nashville LGBT Chamber of Commerce. The LGBT Chamber is a business membership organization made up of over 300 members who practice LGBT inclusion for their employees, suppliers, customers, clients. Since 2012, the Chamber has grown 450%, an average of 38% year-over-year. Like a small business, our small nonprofit organization has added jobs, and now we lease office space. The LGBT Chamber is a member of the Transit for Nashville Coalition, because we don't want our members to have to stop adding jobs or utilizing office space in Davidson County. It would be a detriment to our economy, our growth, and our prosperity if we do nothing to solve our traffic and congestion issues. I believe the LGBT Chamber and our members have been successful at improving people's quality of life. Whether it is by providing goods and services, safe spaces, opportunities, or economic inclusion, we have had a huge positive impact on quality of life for LGBTQ people and allies here in Middle Tennessee. The mayor's transit proposal will also improve quality of life in Nashville. As Nashville grows and becomes more diverse, and as our transit options increase, our city's economy will become more inclusive of its lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer residents and their families, especially if Metro includes certified LGBT-owned businesses in our diverse procurement spend. So, I want to thank the council for their careful consideration of the mayor's mass transit proposal, and I hope you will add it to, add the referendum to the ballot in May. Thank you. Have a good evening.
My name is Elaine Smith, and I reside in Green Hills, Angie Henderson's district. I am inclined to vote for the referendum in May, and it seems obvious that it's going to be on the, on the vote, we're gonna have a vote, but only if I see some renewed commitment to deal with other problems. A referendum of this scale should look after the residents of 2018 as well as those in 2040. Tomorrow, we will be receiving a report from the mayor's new advisory committee that has been meeting to make recommendations on transit and affordability. Want to read you a couple of sentences from that report draft. "Before development along a corridor begins, equitable measures and firm targets for affordable housing must be designed and defined. There must be a scorecard to measure the progress before the development on a transit corridor begins." The word "before" really stands out in this document. I actually personally don't see that we have done in Nashville a very good job of doing this for our existing neighborhoods. So, why, I will ask in May of this referendum, why should I vote for it when I don't, I don't think these new transit zones will do any better? Look at what we've done so far and ask yourself that question. There may be some helpful language in the report tomorrow, but many concerned voters will be looking for the dollar amount that someone, this council, the mayor, someone tells us Nashville is willing to step up and commit to our housing crisis, and I'm looking for a substantive, substantive amount. Lastly, I think we need to be convinced that [BLEEP] growth in transit can be progressive for everybody and not regressive for others. Thank you.
My name is Suzie Reese. I live at 3506 Richland Avenue. Kathleen Murphy is my councilperson, and I'm grateful for her service. I completely support improvements to existing local and regional bus service, expanding the routes and increasing the hours of operation. This is something that costs little and is long overdue. However, we are in a housing crisis in Nashville. At the rate that we are funding the Barnes Fund, it will take Nashville over 90 years to catch up with our housing needs, as projected by the mayor. Where is the urgency for this debilitating problem? Without a commitment from you, our elected officials, to significantly improve the housing situation, I cannot support the transit referendum. In its current form, I fear that it will simply re-concentrate poor Nashvillians living in poverty. We need to improve our transit system, but we also need to address the problems caused by the exponential growth of Nashville. In order to support the transit referendum, I ask you to commit significantly, to commit to significantly improving the housing situation by creating dedicated funding for housing with an amount lot less than 15% of the funding being directed in the transit referendum; two, preserving neighborhoods by creating a municipal land bank and funding our community land trust; three, enacting legislation that ensures transitional zoning between high-density apartment developments along the transit corridors and traditional single-family neighborhoods; and lastly, publishing a quarterly scorecard showing how many affordable units have been preserved, removed, built, and are occupied. Thank you very much.
So, we were able to fund a 600-and-some-million-dollar Music City Center that created some poverty jobs. We've been able to fund $100 million to the Omni Hotel to create some more poverty-wage hotel worker jobs, millions of dollars to build a bridge from Sobro to the Gulch, and millions of dollars to build a private water park we can't even go to. So, we need public transit. We need buses. We need buses to the transit deserts that people have already been displaced to in our county. But I can only support a $5.4 billion tax raise, the most regressive sales tax in the country tied with Chicago, if concurrently with that, we actually deal with the other pressing needs. Several people have spoke to it, but for a fraction of that amount of money, we can put $775 million in bonds to build the 31,000 affordable homes that the mayor said we need, and, and we can't wait. People talk about it not being an either-or. This, and it's true, there's no reason why this can't happen now. Unfortunately, what we see in the community is that a lot of money is going to developer greed, a lot. The question is, when is it gonna come to the others that live in the city? The question is, when is it going to come to the others that live in the city? We need expansion of the buses to be 24 hours because although the gentleman that spoke from Bridgestone mentioned that people work there until late hours, they work later than 1:30 in the morning, they work until 3, 4 in the morning, and we need to have buses that can get people to and from work. But for the price of the tunnel alone, we can build those homes. For the price of the tunnel alone, we can build those homes and we can keep Nashville General open for another couple of years. So we have the money. The question is, do you have the political will, the moral will, to do the right thing for the people's needs, not just for developers? And we're going to remember this in 2019.
Thank you.
Good evening, and I applaud your stamina and perseverance as public servants. My name is Paulette Coleman. I live at 6205 Willow Oak Drive in Bellevue and Dave Rosenberg is my councilmember. I am here because I also chair the NOAA National Organizer Action and Hope Affordable Housing Task Force. We understand the importance of transportation, but we understand a more critical need for people to have affordable housing. And unless we are intentional and creative about our transit plan, the Federal Reserve Bank in a 2015, 2016 report stated that displacement and gentrification are almost the inevitable results of light rail transit. And I'm asking and appealing to you between now and May, because it looks like it's going to be on the ballot, to let's have a critical conversation to avoid these pitfalls that have already been indicated from a source as reliable as the Federal Reserve Bank. I won't reiterate the other things that have been said, but please, let's have a critical discussion, realizing that the plan as it exists now is not a panacea and we probably won't get to a perfect plan, but we certainly can have a better one that is inclusive, equitable and accessible and beneficial to all Nashvillians. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Lance Bloom. I'm a Nashville native and I live at 6th and Vary in Nashville, Tennessee. I know quite a few of the councilmembers here and I've always had great interactions with them all and I've always known all the councilmen to be honest, thoughtful and give a lot of prodding questions for issues that regard their constituents. I'm not here to give any opinion on the transit plan, but I would like to give some salient facts just about all these issues and also for an ask at the end. A lot of people like to talk about transit and because of that, traffic I should say, the Nashville Chamber of Commerce did a study about how long the commute time has increased over the past five years of the construction boom in Nashville. 1.7 minutes is the amount of time that people spend extra over the past five years in the car, about a minute 40 seconds extra. The $9 billion transit plan, we could build 33 soccer stadiums that just got passed for 275 million. We could build 15 convention centers at a cost of 600 million that got passed six, seven years ago. We could also build 10 Jerry Jones style Super Bowl football stadiums for that price. The average commute in America is 25 minutes. In Nashville, it's 23.8. In Williamson County, it's 27. In Austin, it's 44 minutes to get to the Central Business District. Forbes has ranked Austin the number one fastest growing city over the majority of this past decade. The sales tax increase used to fund this transit plan will increase to 10 and 1/4%, making us Nashville the highest sales tax city in America. The percentage of sales tax as a burden on income will increase to 3.74%, the highest in the country. I'm not asking for a vote no or anything of that nature, but the federal transit authority doesn't even have this plan. They don't even know about this plan that they're supposed to spend $1.5 billion on. If they don't know where this money is coming from, how are the voters expected to know how we will make up this deficit? So I ask that you all defer until the administration lets us know how they will make up the deficit.
Hello. My name is Austin Sauerbronn. I live in District 20. I'm a member of Homes for All Nashville and the PATH Coalition. Homes for All Nashville is an association of tenants who are working with other tenants to support folks who are being displaced from their homes by rising rents or being kept in slum conditions because folks don't really have any other options of other places to move to. As you're well aware and as it's already been highlighted, Nashville's growth has an unprecedented race of displacement. Just a few quick stats, 49% of all Nashville renters are cost burdened, 49%. Since 2011, rents have risen 64% while wages have risen only 14%. Over 40% of Nashville households earn under $43,000 a year. If you combine the income limits of affordable, those who are fit into affordable housing income limits and those who fit into workforce housing income limits, that's almost 70% of Nashvillians. So to bring it back to the transit proposal, I want to actually share a full quote from Ann Carpenter, who is a researcher that worked on that report that Paulette mentioned. She says, "When you build light rail, gentrification does tend to occur around the stations. You're going to see commercial investment, displacement, and unfortunately, a lot of involuntary displacement. The affordability component has to be strong. It has to be sizable, a sizable portion of affordable units have to be included." We don't have an affordability component, at least none that we've, the community's been able to see yet. We still don't have a dedicated funding source for affordable housing. We've seen zero enforceable policies that will prevent displacement in transit corridors. I'm not against expanding transit and PATH is not against expanding transit, but before we invest $9 billion in light rail and expanding our transit system, we need to invest in our communities. Our communities deserve to see written and enforceable community benefits to ensure that this doesn't become urban renewal part two. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Shelley Carrington. I am currently a resident of Sumner County, but I am here on behalf of AARP Tennessee. We are located at Fourth Avenue North at the intersection of Fourth and Commerce. We have about 38,000 household members in Davidson County, which translates to about 55,000 members. I am currently the co-chair of the Transit for Nashville Coalition and we've been involved with this issue for quite some time. We're interested in this because many people 50 and older need to have options for transportation. If you're unable to make your doctor's appointments, which aren't the only thing that people 50 and older want to go and do, they want to go to the grocery store and they want to socialize and they want to go to the movies and all the things that you've already heard about. But the truth is that a community that serves the 50 and older also serves the 50 and under. And so if we create an opportunity for people to get where they need to get, then it's going to serve all of Nashvillians. And like many of the people that you've already heard from tonight, if we start with Nashville, then a lot of the other counties around will follow and so we will come up with a regional transit plan. Thank you.
Good evening. You all are very patient. I'm Carol Westlake. I live in Park, Kathleen Murphy's district, but I work in East Nashville where I serve as the executive director of the Tennessee Disability Coalition in the 6th District. The Coalition represents about 30 member organizations, disability groups around the state, and we serve nearly 49, almost 5,000 constituents here in Davidson County of the 82,000 people with disabilities who you heard about a little bit earlier. I'm here tonight to represent the disability community, mostly because so many of my brothers and sisters with disabilities can't be here tonight because they don't have transportation. It is very, very difficult to get around, especially in the evening. In every needs assessment conducted by people with disabilities, for people with disabilities, the need for effective, accessible transportation comes out on top every single time. If your daily commute in the growing Nashville traffic has you frustrated, imagine what it must be like if instead of simply dealing with less than perfect transportation, you had to make do with no transportation at all. For many people with disabilities, that's not fiction, but a daily struggle that's all too real. Mobility constraints, blindness and other disabilities are a major obstacle. Disability and poverty too often go hand in hand, creating additional obstacles. Lack of transportation exacerbates the economic, social and personal isolation of people with disabilities in our community and tends to push them further into poverty. If you can't get to work, you can't, you can't work. That's just the problem. In our current fairly low unemployment environment in Nashville, the unemployment rate for people with disabilities exceeds 10%. A significant portion of my coworkers at the Disability Coalition in East Nashville have disabilities that keep them from driving. They have to rely on public or private transportation options to get to work, as well as to get to the doctor, to shop or to visit friends. Those options are not always available and they're not always reliable. Too often, getting anywhere can be a logistical nightmare and sometimes putting them at risk or putting their job at risk. The importance of an effective transportation system for people with disabilities cannot be overstated. For this reason, we support this initiative and urge you to put it on the ballot in May. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you guys. You guys are troopers being out here. My name's Chris Redditch. I live in Midtown, right downtown. I'm here first as a citizen of this great city of Nashville. I love it. I moved here 10 years ago and this is my home. Second, I'm here as co-founder of Provider Trust. We're the fastest growing software company in the state of Tennessee the last two years and also as a co-owner of Nashville C, the pro soccer team here in town. Thank you guys for your support last month. I moved here again almost 10 years ago and I've experienced the impact of this amazing growth in the city every day, like most of us. What took me five minutes to get from a house in Germantown to my offices at 2300 Charlotte seven years ago when I started Provider Trust, now it can take 20 to 25 minutes to get home. While this is a hindrance to me and I do have Provider Trust team members where it takes now an over an hour to get to work, it's just a hindrance for this, for me as an upward mobile person, right? But there's, but unfortunately, there's a segment of Nashville where this extended time to get to work causes them to miss shifts, causes them to miss doctor appointments, causes them to lose their jobs. And this impacts the lives and their families in a negative way and negatively Nashville. So we know that there's an issue. This is not up for debate. What is up for debate is how to solve it and I support the "Let's Move Nashville" plan. While not a perfect plan, I have learned throughout my career that the enemy of progress is perfection. I would not be here today and have a company that's the fastest growing in Tennessee if I waited for it to be perfect. In fact, we wouldn't have professional soccer here in Nashville that's going to play next month if we waited for it to be perfect. I believe the same thing that can happen with transit plan. I'm in full support to put the plan on the ballot to help address the transportation issues by placing it on the ballot. I think that the city of Nashville will come together. Please put it on the ballot. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Andrea Flores-Burrows. I live in District 23. I couldn't help but notice the gentleman sleeping on the bench in front of the, yet again, symbolic gesture representing the civil rights struggle here in Nashville as I was coming into the courthouse. And what's worse than sitting in traffic is not being able to afford a home here because I don't make enough money and being cost burdened in the rental property that I am living in right now. The community is beyond symbolic gestures, beyond dialogue at this point. We want legally binding community benefits, which definitely includes affordable housing, $775 million by 2025 to make community members who are low income and make housing an affordable option here. If transit is going to move forward, the contractors and subcontractors need to be paid living wages so that they can actually afford to live in this city. I know many people, many construction workers who've built this city who can't even afford to attend some of these football games or convention meetings. So making living wages a priority is also your responsibility. Expanding, expanding the actual bus routes that we do have now, making it a 24-hour service thing is something that we can and must do for the people who actually use the bus. Many of the people in business suits and executive positions, I'm wondering if they're actually thinking about transit from a selling point for more growth or if they actually utilize the services. In the medical field, what we call unintended growth, unplanned, uncontrolled is cancer. And for many, cancer leads to death. And as we see in Nashville, the same is true with displacement. So thank you.
My name is Jay Levin. I live at 301 Demumbrian Street, just a couple of blocks from here. I've lived in downtown for a little over nine years. I've had a front row seat at the growth of downtown. I've also had a front row seat at a lot of the traffic that comes through downtown. I see the interstates. I see all the struggles we have. Very clearly, we need a better transit system. I appreciate the council's openness to discuss this issue. I appreciate especially Freddie O'Connell for helping through a lot of the questions I've had, both online, email, many of you other councilmembers being willing to engage on social media and other avenues. That's very much appreciated. Again, we need a better transit system. We need a better bus system locally. We need a better rapid bus system through the middle Tennessee region. We need improved sidewalks. We need improved bikeways. But I have a hard time understanding where the light rail component fits into this. When you look at the cost, it accounts for about 2/3 of the cost of this $9 billion project. When you look at other cities with our population size, with our population density, with our job distribution density, light rail tends to fail. Seattle, I've heard as a comp for a good light rail program, but you look when their population and their population density was in the range that Nashville's will be in the next seven to 10 years, it failed massively. It's only when their population rose to about two times what our raw numbers are, about three times what our population density is, that their light rail system started to show positive numbers. Please, give us a better transit system, but give us one that doesn't burden us with exorbitant costs for a light rail system that history shows is more likely than not going to fail and fail colossally. We really, again, I appreciate all the effort everyone's put in here. I also ask that you please take a look down the line at some other major projects that we have coming to the city, such as new football stadium, new arena, where that fits in with a 10 and 1/4% sales tax. So again, thank you guys very much for all your work.
Hello, my name's Samuel Lester. I live at 210 Morton Avenue. I work with Open Table Nashville doing street outreach with people experiencing homelessness. I think this is probably the time of night when y'all are all thanking God that our time is only two minutes. If you want the full experience, you should stand while, while we speak, but because that's what many of us have been doing. The transit is obviously, I just don't, can't imagine the referendum not being approved. But the issue here, I think, is what are the priorities of Nashville? You've seen many, many people get up with many different interests who are your constituents and many have spoken so well, but at the same time, there's a huge number of people that are missing here, right? 50% of Nashvillians are cost burdened and struggling to stay in their homes. And that was from 2015, two years ago, right? Rents have increased nearly $200 again since then. Over 30% of homeowners are cost burdened. The name "Move Nashville," I think is a little ironic because what's really happening is we're moving Nashville outside of Nashville. People can no longer afford to live here. It's affecting everyone. There's no one of your council districts that has less than 40% cost burden renters. No one of the council districts, right? And many people are actually being forced out of the city. The recent Tennessean article pointing out that in the urban core, 20% of blacks have been forced to leave their neighborhoods. Now, these people are taxpayers. They are people that have lived here for generations, who have church groups and communities and support groups here that are being forced out of the city and these are... and support groups here that are being forced out of the city, and these are the people that you represent. Of course, I'm especially worried about those people who are experiencing homelessness. We've lost, last year, we lost 118 people who were either on the street or who had just left the street. And as you probably have seen recently, 10, more than 10 people have died due to exposure. People are dying because of this, and the families that aren't dying are suffering terribly financially. I hope you'll consider voting for affordable housing and making sure that's a part of any transit plan. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lauren Plummer. I live at 2403 Hyman Street in District 21. Thanks for your time tonight. I believe the transit referendum needs more work before we take it to a vote. As is, it does not address the needs of everyday working-class Nashvilleians who have built this city and who keep it running. I'm especially concerned about the effects of increased gentrification and displacement that light rail will bring, as we've seen again, again, again and again in other cities, not just that it's a possibility, but that it's been a fact. And this in the midst of this affordable housing crisis in which we are already floundering. Housing, transportation, and jobs are an inseparable trifecta when we consider the infrastructure of a healthy community. We can't succeed at one without all the others. This transit plan is said to anticipate the needs of our city 50 years from now, but I want to know about the people. Where will our neighbors be in 50 years if we've allowed a whole generation of children and families, elders, to be displaced into unstable, unsafe living situations, shelters, the streets, or surrounding communities with fewer resources and opportunities? This transit plan needs an anti-displacement plan before I think it's ready to go. We're asking that $775 million in bonds be allocated to build and preserve the 31,000 units of affordable housing that we need by 2025 to keep up with the needs of our growing community. It's time that we put our collective foot down, not on growth and change, but on these huge-ticket projects that do not benefit the whole community or address the highest priority needs for people of lower incomes. So I ask you to vote no on this, and let's keep working on it. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bill Howell. I live at 1701 Sweetbrier Avenue in Councilmember Berkeley Allen's district. I support having a modern transit system in Nashville, provided it can be done in a way that assures good jobs and career paths for unemployed and underemployed residents of our promised zones, that it addresses our affordable housing crisis, and does not place the yoke of a highest-in-the-nation sales tax on our shoulders. Others have eloquently addressed the good jobs and affordable housing issues. I will focus on the funding issue. As a former organizer and lobbyist for Tennesseans for Fair Taxation, I used data and methodology from the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy to quantify the impact of sales tax and property tax on families at different income levels. I found that compared to property tax, a sales tax would take from the poor and give to the rich. 95% of Nashvilleians would pay less tax for transit if it is funded with a property tax. I sent you extensive research to support that statement. I urge you to change to funding the transit proposal with a property tax. It allows those who benefit the most to pay in a portion, in proportion to their benefit and their means. It can be done without the risk of a referendum. It can be fine-tuned to changing circumstances. Metro Council retains its authority over funding the project. It sidesteps the state legislature's attempt to meddle in Nashville government. It retains Nashville's image as a low-tax location. A significant part of the revenue would come from non-residents. But now I am hearing that the sales tax proposal is offered as a "take it or leave it" proposition. The only way to change it will be to defeat the referendum, then come back to council to raise the property tax. I do not understand why that is. If this is true, it is either a usurpation of council's taxing authority or an abdication by council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Adam Valrath. I live in McFerrin Park, and thank you all for staying late to listen to us. When my neighbors talk about transit, they worry about Nashville turning into Atlanta, covered in sprawling highways that look more like parking lots. We're here tonight to avoid that, and we need a plan that benefits all Nashville residents. It's true that because we're in Tennessee and have state laws and such, that a aggressive sales tax increase may be the only funding option large enough for this plan by itself. But that tax burden could be eased by mixing in savings elsewhere in the city budget. Nashville spends more than most cities incentivizing businesses to move here and create jobs. Yet our unemployment rate is 2.3%, tied for the lowest in the nation. We've already achieved full employment and then some. So why is Nashville still spending millions attracting more businesses? Ending these tax breaks will free up significant resources to make this transit plan more equitable for fair subsidies and other community benefits. A budget is a moral document. Every dollar spent digging a tunnel is one not spent building an affordable home. Every light rail car built means a hospital bed sold. Every mile of track laid could have been miles of bus routes and sidewalks. I know these choices are not easy, and I'm here tonight to say that we have a moral obligation to help as many Nashville residents as we can, not just the new arrivals. Thank you, council, for your time, and I do appreciate the work you all do.
I'm Billy Level. I live on Churchwood Drive in District 34. My business, Turf Managers, is located in District 17. And I've listened to both sides of this tonight, the fours, which I think very few of those folks actually ride the bus, and then the other one, other part of them act like we don't even have a transit plan in, in place. Then there's the people that are against, and they're the ones that ride the bus. So basically, the customers that are actually riding the bus are against it. So that just goes to tell me this, our certain transit plan right now is broken. I approach this from a business standpoint because I own a business here, and I think it's relevant. I, I think this is a broken platform, and if you continue to build a business on a broken platform without fixing what you already have, you're doomed for absolute disaster. And I think that's exactly where we're headed with this. I believe that it's on a hub and spoke right now with no cross-town routes, and everything I've studied, it, the new system's going to be the same way. And so that's how I approach this. I also have researched the fact that this current system loses $212,000 a day. I say, well, this isn't supposed to make money. However, I believe that we can make it better, and we need to. If the new, the transit system we have that is proposed, which I'm not against transit, I'm just against this proposal, I believe that, I've done my research, it will lose $1.8 million a day in today's dollars if it was built right now. So I think, listening to the people that are against it, that they are asking to fix what's already there, take the money that is left over, and put it into housing. Thank you.
Hello, folks. My name is Gareth Cornelius. I live at 32 16-year Heart Road. I'd like to thank you for your time. I know you folks have got to be wore out on this. My approach to this is, I'm all about transportation myself. I've been a trucker for a long time, been in a lot of cities. Yeah, folks, we got traffic. But let me tell you what, go check out the windy city in Chicago, New York, and LA, and them folks has got some traffic. So now what I'm talking about is more along what this gentleman's talking about. Before we trash what we got, why don't we do this continuous improvement? If we continue to improve on what we've got, we don't have to scrap everything and think we got to spend six, eight, nine billion dollars to dig a hole in the ground down here. These rail systems get obsolete pretty quick. Anybody's been to New York City, go up there and look at theirs. I was on them this summer. Boy, they're ragged and looking rough. It'll cost them people up there more money than you can imagine to try to maintain this light rail. So, talk to the locals up there, they're not real big on it. There's alternative ways to get it, especially now we got Uber. You know, I mean, we got a way to get around, folks. So this is my deal, too. Look at the Music City Star that we all diligently all worked on. I know it well. Got a piece probably right next to it. Look at it. The thing is rusting down, and we all so diligently thought that was going to help the people of Lebanon, be they answered all their prayers on I-40 coming in. Not so fast on that one. So, nothing to, how are we going to do it? Gentleman mentioned putting it on the property tax. Look, folks, hey, not, property tax ain't even, don't get us in that, please. You know, I think, I mean, whatever we do, let's use a common sense approach to it. And as far as getting something ready to vote, I'm all for, let's vote on it. But what I would like to see is a comprehensive plan on what we're voting on. I don't want it to be something where we had one lady from California say, "Let's vote on it and then figure it out." No, let's figure it out before we vote on it. Thank you for your time.
I'm back again. Sorry. I'm like that bad penny. My name is Raffiella Cohane, and I live on 30th Avenue North. Mr. Kendall is my councilperson. I am here because I come from New York City, obviously from my accent, and I have been riding public transportation since I couldn't walk. So I know about public transportation. I do not think this is the right plan for Nashville, however. First of all, the sales tax is the most regressive tax there is. It's going to affect horribly the lower-income people and myself as a retiree. I am not going to be very pleased with this, and I will have to think about other places to go shopping. And, and by the way, just so you don't forget, in July, the automatic increase on gas tax comes into effect thanks to Governor Haslam's Re-Improve Act. So it's going to be a double whammy this year for everybody. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I, I read in the Tennessean that this is now up to costing $9 billion. I don't know when we started running, throwing billions of dollars around like it was nothing. Billions of dollars is a lot of money. Millions of dollars is a lot of money. This could be done in a, in a much more efficient way if we took care of the, the bus routes. You're, you're talking about a system of light rail that is 19th-century transportation in the 21st century. I, I don't understand that. This is the "it" city. You shouldn't be going backwards. The transportation system in New York was built before there were cars. You shouldn't be going as that as your example, because that's a bad one. And one other thing, don't count on federal funding. Trump just took away the $13 billion that was promised to New York and New Jersey for a tunnel between New York and New Jersey for Amtrak. So they're not going to give you money.
My name is Melissa Smithson. I live at 4714 Delia Drive in Council Lady Tanaka Virtures District. Nashville has a problem, but it also has an opportunity here. Our problem is, we are the "it" city, and people from all over the US see us as a place to live, work, and party. With its newly-acquired status, we now have increased crime, traffic, affordable housing issues, due to overinflated property values the city has brought on its core citizens, and lack of inadequate transportation needs. But we have an opportunity to become the spotlight city for addressing the needs of a 21st-century approach, especially for transit, and not the outdated technology of the past. You know, in marketing term, you must know your audience in order to brand and sell your product. Nashville's your audience. It's extremely hot here, we all know, in the summer, and cold in the winter, and it's very hilly almost across the whole county. If you will observe, the bike lanes are not being used. And other than tourists and those that live and work downtown, the sidewalks are not overcrowded with people. The tour buses have more ridership than the MTA right now. And we are now thinking about adopting this mass transit thing. I agree, we need to plan for our future for transit in Nashville, but we need to embrace new technology with ridership incentives, more bus routes where everything doesn't transfer downtown first. Spending $9 billion on outdated technology with tunnels and light rail is the thing of the past, and, sorry, I got off with. It works today for some, but it's not going to work for us. And back then, those cities, Chicago and New York, had the forethought back then to embrace future technology. It's not today's answers in spending this huge amount of money that few are adopting, and it's not servicing all the communities. I hear a lot of the support for this transit tonight from a lot of businesses that will benefit from the build of this mass transit. It would be more palatable to us if you spend $1 to $2 billion on establishing a completely new dependable MTA system and not break our city with this other gregarious plan. We have a way, we have way more issues to deal with. Crime, affordable housing, and community hospitals. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Pate. I stay at 2206 Hurwood Drive in District 17 near the fairgrounds. I grew up here in Nashville. I'm here today with my friends at the PATH Coalition. Again and again, I have been shocked by the priorities of this mayor and this government to amplify the voices of tourists, developers, and country music stars over the voices of working-class people, in particular, working-class people of color. It seems to me that this is a moral opportunity to rework this referendum before it moves to vote. An opportunity to move away from further displacement of communities of color, from investing in initiatives that will make it so more people will be without homes, away from gentrifying neighborhoods where families have lived for generations, away for, away from closing Metro General Hospital, away from police violence. We need to fix our bus system and get more people home from their jobs with a 24-hour bus service. We need $775 million in bonds to buy and preserve 31,000 affordable homes by 2025. We need living wage jobs. We need a fully-funded community oversight board to review the nearly 700 complaints against Metro Police. What is the world that we want to create together? Don't put $9 billion to light rail when there are civil rights being violated, ignored, and voices silenced, and people sleeping on the streets because they can't get home from their second shift jobs. We're not against transit. We're for getting everyone on the bus and against displacement and gentrification. The way I see it, this current plan would tax our bread to give us crumbs. Thank you.
I just moved to Nashville. I was dumbfounded at the cost of living and the rates of gentrification here. My name is Rhonda Williams, and I live in East Nashville. And I want to say that improvement does not ensure just improvement, and development does not ensure just development, and transportation planning does not ensure just transportation systems, and transportation corridors don't ensure that people who are seeking housing and need affordable and low-income housing will be able to access it. In fact, it can actually result in displacement and has in the past and does in the present. And I want to say that community benefits and community benefit agreements are not just less cars driving on the road and a promise of jobs. Jobs for whom is the question? What kind of jobs? Living wage jobs for whom is the question? How have you intentionally, as city council, built justice for everyday Nashvilleians? Nashvilleians who may be displaced, Nashvilleians who are homeless, Nashvilleians who are laborers, including people of color, into this transportation bill? Legally incorporated into this transportation bill? As a new resident, I want to know this. What we need is affordable housing, an affordable housing component as part of the plan. We need housing justice. What we need are living wage jobs accessible equitably to people. We need economic justice. What we need are improved affordable bus services, now with extended hours, now with extended hours, updated vehicles serving people in neighborhoods often excluded, marginalized, and forgotten. What we need is transportation justice in this transportation plan. We are in 2018, marking 50 years of Martin Luther plan. We are in 2018, marking 50 years of Martin Luther King's "Where Do We Go From Here?" This is a moment. So consider, what will history say about this moment?
Thank you, ma'am.
What will history say when they are memorializing and discussing Nashville and its history of equality and freedom?
Thank you, ma'am.
What will they say about its record of injustice and inequality in the 21st century? That's what you need to consider and listen to all the people who are pushing for working class and poor people to have their just due as a part of this transportation plan, just like all of those who are engaged in materialistic growth development money for the rich. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Rick Williams, 120 Winthorpe Place, Old Hickory, Tennessee. Come to you tonight urging you not to put this on the ballot in May. This plan unfortunately is like the amp on steroids. Again, you're taking traffic lanes out of the roadway to put a vehicle that's not going to be used. It's not a regional plan. What happens if Sumner County doesn't fund their part of it, and we get it up to Goulton Road to the county line? It ends. That's it. It's a rail to nowhere. We've got to have, this has got to be something done in a much larger scale. The state needs to be more involved. I brought to this council and the mayor, about a year ago, I brought to the mayor, and I've passed out to this council before, a plan using the current rail system. We need to be reaching out to CSX. I see Steve Bland over there. I appreciate him giving me that plan years ago. I don't know who originated it, but Steve gave me the idea, and I worked on that. And I still think we should try to reach out to CSX. And we should go after transit money out of the federal government, because this is a state and regional issue. It's not just Metro, and we don't need to start out with a $9 billion plan that's not going to work. So thank you for listening, and thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Cersei, if you want to speak, come on and line on up. Mr. Cersei is asked to go last, and I'm going to offer him that opportunity. Ma'am, you're next.
Good evening. Make it like it was. Let me entertain you, because you've heard all of the voices of those pro and con. Let me share with you the poverty, the middle class, the wealthy. Let's talk about health care, safety. How about constitutional rights, health, safety, and welfare for all the citizens of Nashville and Tennessee and the federal United States of America? Let us talk about ignorance and voting without knowledge, because knowledge is power. I love my brothers and sisters who spoke with you with dignity and respect, rising from the trenches. I love that they voiced their opinions, but most of all, I love that you actually sat in your chairs and you listened as their representatives. Your constituents deserve your time, effort, and energy. Now, let me talk with you. Yes, I am for mass transit. This city's traffic is horrendous. Yes, I'm for improved housing. Yes, I'm for everything that protects the health, safety, and welfare of all the residents. I am not, however, ready to vote on a referendum that's not complete. Why isn't it complete? You're convincing people of the glitz and the glitter, of all those beautiful pictures and graphics, and how wonderful the transit system is. But you have not said, please, we need to research above and below-ground faults, soil tolerance, vibration effects, health issues, pollution stats, utility pipes and wiring, not in place since the '50s and '60s, so poor us, emergency and police safety, homeowners' imminent domain takeover, and we need more information on that to reasonably vote for a realistic, necessary, and proper, equitable, and fair decision-making voting process. I have for you a packet that all of you have received by email, and hope you've read them, but I'm going to leave these here for you so that you may share them with your constituents. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Cersei, you can wrap us up.
Am I resonating sufficiently? Mr. Jameson, you can hear me? All right, okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I can be short. Sweet will be determined by the body. You've heard the presentations this evening. I'm not going to even begin to attempt to summarize them, other than to simply say that democracy was the hallmark of many of the presentations. People lauded it. People applauded you for your effort and characterized it as an exercise in democracy. I certainly concur with that. And I thank Councilman Elrod and Council Lady Gilmore, and certainly my councilman Freddie O'Connell for their diligent work, as well as the other co-sponsors of this measure. But all we really are asking you to do this evening is let the people decide whether they want this or not. It's as simple as that. Put it on the ballot, let the people vote it up or down. That is a democratic exercise, is it not? That's all we're asking you to do. And God bless you, and thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Declare the public hearing closed. I would, before everybody flees the chamber, I wanted to take a moment to thank the staff of the council office for adding some additional hours. And from the clerk's office especially, since they were instrumental in making sure the meeting ran smoothly. So thank you very much, ladies. And as well, I would like to thank the members of the Metropolitan Council who were here tonight. I know that this is not necessarily what is scribed in the duties when you start, but I think it's important on this big issue for us to take the time, the three and a half hours we did, to listen to the public. Thank you very much.